Today is a regular meeting of the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas. It is Tuesday, August 27, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're pleased to have with us today Pastor Kevin Spencer from Center Point Church to give us the invocation. Pastor.
Good morning. Join me as we pray. Lord, we honor you in this time. We thank you for this day that you've given us, and I just ask for unity and peace in the decisions that get made today. Thank you for wisdom beyond our years and our experiences with the men and women that lead this county, and thank you for clear communication back and forth. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please draw the allegiance to the United States. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, blessed from the great state of Texas, honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Okay, we have some special proclamations today. The first is a proclamation to designate August 31, 2024, as Hood County Overdose Awareness. Do we have anybody here from this? There, are you back again?
I'm back again.
Okay, well, good. We all, let me have both of them. Everybody sign both of them now? Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, overdose awareness. You've read the last one so good, you want to read this one again?
If you want me to.
Sure, come on. We will all go down there and you can read it. How about that? You can read that, and we'll let you have the pretty one too, then.
I appreciate that.
Okay?
So, whereas substance misuse and drug overdose continues to be a significant public health crisis, claiming countless lives throughout communities worldwide, whereas August 31, 2024 is established as the national day in remembrance of those lost to overdose and to acknowledge the devastation this has brought to hundreds of thousands of affected family members and friends, whereas this is a day of coordinated response from substance use, misuse, awareness groups, organizations, and affected families, sharing their lived experiences as part of a whole group, warning and informing our youth, the public, and the unsuspecting, whereas Hood County is recognizing the impact overdose has on an individual, family, and community, as well as the resulting deaths in our community, whereas Hood County wishes to recognize those affected locally by the tragedy of overdose and bring awareness, education, and prevention resources to Hood County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim August 31, 2024, International Overdose Awareness Day in Hood County, Texas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very nice. She does a great job, doesn't she? Really.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all. Yeah, you hold that out there. There you go.
Thank you all.
Are you coming back with the next one? We got another proclamation.
I know, right? Nope, that's not me.
That's not you? Okay.
I think two's enough.
All right. This next one is Suicide Awareness Day. Who do we have there? Good, come on down here. How are you doing?
Doing well. Chris Winker.
Chris Winker. Okay, Chris, you go ahead. Now, you see the job you got? You go ahead and read this proclamation.
Whereas suicide is a serious public health crisis that affects individuals of all ages and backgrounds within our community, and whereas every life lost to suicide represents a tragedy that leaves a lasting impact on our families, friends, and communities, and whereas Suicide Awareness Month provides an opportunity to reduce stigma around mental health, raise awareness about suicide prevention, and shows individuals that they are not alone with the resources and support, and whereas Hood County is committed to fostering a supportive environment where individuals feel safe to seek help for mental health, and whereas through education, outreach, understanding, and collaboration, we can create a community where hope is pervasive, and whereas we honor and warmly remember those whose lives we have lost to suicide. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim September 24, 2024, Suicide Awareness Day in Hood County, Texas, to recognize both those we have lost to suicide, as well as those we can and have saved. Mental health matters. You are not alone. There is hope, and help is available.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Good job you do. Good job. Thank you very much. All right, we'll take it. Good deal.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
One more. Do we have a presentation from the extension?
Yeah. Yeah, an extension there yet, and right here. Now, you go get us, you go give us.
Yes, sir.
I used to meet you, Jay. Now, this first time you've been here.
Yes, it is.
Well, we're going to take it out hard, because he's got a lot of, you're going to introduce all of them.
Yes.
So, we're going to let you stay up here and do that.
Okay, very good.
Okay, we're going to do that. Go get it right there. You are happy now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, everybody. This is Jay Kingston from Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service. He's a, are you the district admin?
District.
You took over from what was?
Donald Kelm.
God, he's been around since water.
I know it, right?
Yeah. Well, good. Well, welcome aboard. You've got some big shoes to fill, but go ahead and give us an update.
Very good. Yes, glad to be here this morning and nice to meet the court as well. I wanted to brag on Hannah today with you and the great things that she's done over this past year and what some of the great things AgriLife Extension is doing here in Hood County. On the front page of this newsletter, you'll see we focus on our health and community and health topics, our program area, and this is stuff that we've done district-wide, and so this is kind of a district overview of this past year on some things that we've accomplished that has to deal with family and health education. But if we turn over to the back, this drills down more and focuses on what's been going on here in Hood County, and as we see, the Ag and Natural Resources section is pretty small, and we hope for next year to have that thing filled up pretty good, and so we've got an agent coming to do that. But if we look at what Hannah's been doing in the Family and Consumer Sciences program area, she's done a great job providing some childcare conference trainings for our healthcare providers. Mostly that will be our daycare providers and providing the needing training for them. She does a great job of teaching about being healthy and active living with her Walk Across Texas program and her Walk Through Texas history. You can see there quite a few participants walking over 5,600 miles, and so that's a lot of mileage, a lot of getting out there and moving, getting healthy. She also does a great job with the Our Better Living for Texas program, which is for our underserved audiences and those that are on SNAP benefits, and so providing nutrition education, how to plan meals and work on a budget in terms of providing their families with the need and nutrition as well. And so, one of the more favorite parts that I enjoy the most is the 4H and Youth Development and the things that AgriLife Extension gets to do with our young kids. And so here in Hood County, you guys have quite a few members in the 4H program. I think there's 156 enrolled kids this past year, and you see they're greatly involved in a number of different projects, whether they're livestock projects, a bunch of different contests, and these contests are great in providing those kids an opportunity to not only learn some life skills that will benefit them in the future, but some of those leadership skills that kids need and that will help develop them into being leaders of tomorrow. And then finally, Hannah's had the opportunity to go into the schools and work with the local school districts with our curriculum enrichment, and a lot of that is around either college career development or ag literacy, and so teaching our kids about agriculture and where their food comes from and how that benefits and impacts them as well. I think that's going to be important as we move forward in the future. But anyway, that's just a quick overview of interpretation of what AgriLife Extension's been doing here with Hannah in Hood County, and we definitely appreciate the support of the court of our efforts, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Well, I think it's, Hannah does a fabulous job. I want you to know that. And since you're already up there, why don't you go ahead and introduce us to this, we're going to skip around, this is to item number one, since you're up here, and introduce us to Amanda. God, you've done everything except working the circus. You worked in branches, you did the Mexican fruit fly, I mean, I was reading through your book. Worked in a tax service. You've done a lot of different things and got a master's too, don't you?
I will be completing that this fall.
Well, good. Well, I think it's great. I don't want to steal your thunder, but I mean, she's impressed me. She impressed me a lot, so please take it all.
Yes, I would love to introduce Amanda Salinas as the new county extension agent for Ag and Natural Resources here in Hood County. I think we're lucky to have her for sure. Having an agent with, she has a little over four years' experience in the extension service is a great asset. She does have a bachelor's degree and also will be completing her master's degree this fall, like she said, and so she comes with that experience, both with AgriLife and with Prairie View A&amp;M, working with young kids in the 4H program, working with adults in the Ag and Natural Resources area, working with master gardeners. I know Hood County has a pretty good master gardener program, and she'll be, she's ready to jump in to work with them as well. But again, we are, I think we're lucky to have Amanda, and we appreciate y'all's support of her as well.
Good. You want to say something, Hannah?
No, I'm just very glad to have a co-worker again, so we're excited to have her.
Okay, well, great. Well, great. Welcome aboard. We welcome you. Thank you very much. Please say a couple of words.
I think he covered a lot of it, but like he said, I am coming in with a little over four years of extension experience, love working with the kiddos, love working with adults and the adult programming, and I'm really looking forward to getting to know Hood County and working with the community here.
Well, good. We look forward to having you here, so thank you very much. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
And buckle up, because that office down there gets some work done for sure. Hannah and Leigh Anne, sure, they do a lot of good things down there and proud to have them and.
We got high expectations.
Good deal. Good deal.
I was told I needed to hit the ground running, so I'm running.
Yep, yep, for sure.
Good deal. Welcome. Thank you.
So, do we need a motion on that, Judge?
We do. We've already hired, haven't we?
Well, I think that we're here to.
Okay, just, well, make a motion. We'll do, make a motion, make a motion, Commissioner Andrews?
Yes, sir. I'll move that we take appropriate action to allow AgriLife Extension to hire Amanda Salinas to Hood County for the Agricultural and Natural Resources County Extension Agent.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to hire Amanda here to take over in the Ag Extension Office along with Hannah and keep it running smoothly and do big things here, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Welcome aboard. Thank you both for coming down. Okay, the next is service awards. The first one is Laura Alanas, five years.
I believe she is out of town today, so she's not going to be able to attend.
Okay, so next is Casey Braby.
Close.
Oh, is that close?
Brady.
Brady. Long A.
That was good, though.
Okay.
Casey is one of the nurses at the jail, and he does a fantastic job. Been here now for five years, and he works nights normally, but he'll work days when he needs to, and so he's a do anything we need to have done kind of guy, so appreciate you. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you very much. All right, I appreciate it.
Okay, the next service award is Manuel Champion. Is he here?
We think he may be on a transport run.
Oh, okay. Well, he's 10 years. Okay. All right, then it brings us to our next agenda item, and that's citizens' comments at large, and I'm going to caution everybody again that if you wish to speak on any agenda item, you must fill out a public participation form, hand it to the sheriff. The sheriff will then hand it to Ms. Leffwich and get you numbered and get you in queue to speak. If you don't fill out a public participation form and get to the agenda, you won't be allowed to speak, so that's very important. The person, the first person that signed up to speak on open mic is Jim Bell.
I've got a handout for y'all. Thank you. I'll get you one. This is about the Bitcoin noise issue. Commissioner Samuelson offered to show us a few minutes of a video, which was actually a lecture given by Professor Mariana Alves Pereira. I don't know if I pronounce that right. I actually watched that video. It was a lecture given to doctors and science professionals. Before she gave the lecture, she identified her qualifications to give this lecture. She has a bachelor's degree in physics from State University in New York, a master's degree in biomedical engineering from Drexel University in Philadelphia, and a PhD in environmental sciences from New University in Lisbon. I also provided in this handout a link to this video. It's 58-plus minutes long, but I urge you to watch this video. It is very enlightening. This particular video is a lecture she gave in Slovenia. I have watched two other videos of lectures that she gave in different countries, but they amounted to the same lecture in different locations. She and her team have been researching vibroacoustic disease from infrasound, which is low-frequency noise below the spectrum, which we can hear since 1980. She terms this low-frequency sound because it's harmful to human health in very serious ways, an agent of disease. Sound waves or noise is classified by the World Health Organization as an inanimate mechanical force which we may or may not hear. That means this is a physical dynamic force on our biological structures. The higher the frequency, the shorter the sound wave, just like radio waves. At 3,000 hertz, the wavelength of airborne sound is only 11 centimeters. At 500 hertz, the wavelength of airborne sound is 68 centimeters. At 100 hertz, the wavelength is 3.43 meters. At 20 hertz, which is the lowest frequency we can actually hear, the wavelength of airborne sound is over 17 meters long. Any insulation wall built to protect us from this sound has to be 17 meters thick. She did mention that if they had some kind of special material they could build this wall, they might be able to reduce it to 10 meters thick. She did not say how high the wall had to be to protect the people in the local community. At 1 hertz, which is way below what we can hear, that wavelength is 343 meters long. This is the problem with low-frequency noise. It penetrates the buildings. It penetrates the earth. At a frequency of 1,000 hertz, we hear very well. Occupational hearing loss is defined as occurring at 4,000 hertz. The human baby cries at about 3,500 hertz. These wavelength measurements represent the required thickness of what an insulation wall must be to protect us from the harmful effects of noise at these frequencies for human health. Historically, we have concentrated our efforts on developing protection from noise, excuse me, only in our ears. So, the sound study that was authorized two meetings ago, which to my knowledge has not been conducted yet, needs to take into consideration sound waves below the frequencies that we can hear if its results are going to actually protect us from harmful effects to human All of the sound studies that Marathon is voluntarily doing are based on the decibel system, the DBA system, which is only designed to protect our ears. She identified in this lecture the harmful effects of less invasive generations of sound. She talks about wind turbines and the wind farms. Horse ranchers in the area have developed problems with their livestock, serious problems, problems with their feet. It thickens, these low-frequency sounds thickens the walls of our circulatory system. It thickens the membrane around our heart. It thickens the membrane around our brain, and when I did a simple Google search, just a simple Google search, to find out how far low-frequency noise will penetrate through earth and buildings, in an instant, the response I got was hundreds of miles, hundreds of miles. This means the entire county is at risk, not just those people living within 1,000 meters of this plant. So, I urge you.
Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Okay, the next speaker is Harrod Granik.
Yes, thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I rushed in here to be able to speak before I have to go to a commitment, and what bothers me is multiple disparate items that seem to tie together. Last week, there was a court ruling on nomination for District Court that preserved the nomination of someone who had seemed to, was nominated by violation of rules, was a, held a public office and still ran for the office, voted in her own nomination, and which presented a tie, and then won the nomination of the Republican Party for that, the district office. It seems like this is another example in this county of everybody has to follow the rules, but not everybody has the same rules to follow. I remember our former county clerk who decided the Supreme Court ruling was not relevant because she didn't agree with it. She later, on a decision about the insurance, whether to use an insurance, said, well, the Commissioners only voted three to two, so I don't need to abide by that. Now, that's history because she's gone, and we have a great clerk now. But now we're into the controversy of district clerk, and I'm tying this in with, on item seven that will come before y'all, which says, let's audit the IT department. Well, our IT department seems to do an excellent job. It reminds me, but we're going to audit it because it does such a good job. I defer to the comments that Commissioner Samuelson has previously said that IT departments are frequently audited by this, but it reminds me of the movie Money Something, Moneyball, where one team did something so unusual that it won a lot, and rather than look into how, what that did wrong by winning, winning a lot, it reminds me of this IT department. Our IT department is doing an excellent job, better than almost any other IT department, so we're going to audit it. We're going to spend taxpayer money to do this audit, while I hear frequently saying, oh, we have to save taxpayer money. It strikes me more of a harassment of the IT department, and it calls to me, since I've been coming to Commissioners Court in 2015, when I started, although I've been around considerably longer, that we had, went through three librarians who were harassed, doing a good job, but they were harassed until they quit. We had an election administrator who was doing a superb job, was recognized by the state, but was harassed until she resigned, and we wasted a lot of taxpayer money going through that. I have to say that we have a great librarian now, we have a great election administrator, but I get tired of seeing this harassment, and I think many citizens who pay attention also get tired of that, and they don't want that. You know, and when we look at one commissioner, where there's some question of whether he was a resident of that precinct or not, said, sue me. Well, and that was sort of what happened with our district court thing. Sue me. Private citizens have to spend the money to do this, rather than doing what is best for the citizens, what really saves the money, and what is a fair system. It reminds me of the book Animal Farm, where when the, those who remember that, the animals take over the farm and they run it, and it's going to be a democracy, and they have a set of rules, and one of the rules is all animals are equal, but a little further in the book, it becomes all animals are equal, but some animals are more equal than others, and that's what's happening here. And I think that everybody needs to follow the same rules, or the electorate is going to get tired of this and not even go to vote. Thank you.
That is all of the open-mic questions that I do have. Does somebody feel like that they filled out an open mic? That's it? Okay. All right, we've taken, we're now into the miscellaneous business to be discussed. We've already disposed of item number one, so item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to implement distribution of Cook's Children's Safe Sleep Brochure in conjunction with issuing newborn birth certificates. Ms. Christine Leffwich here to explain this.
That's me. Let's see, I did provide a brochure, but I have some extra copies. There we go. So, Judge, your office, I think, actually referred the representatives of this program over to me, and I met with Samantha St. John, I guess it's probably been about six weeks ago, to talk about this program. Other counties are doing it, Tarrant County and Wise County, but essentially, it's just an awareness, it's a community awareness campaign to make sure that newborn babies, you know, sleep alone in their cribs, that they're not sleeping with others, that they're not surrounded by toys and things like that that can cause suffocation. In addition to the brochure, there's a QR code that the recipient of the brochure can scan to get additional resources through the Cook's Children system, and so what I want to do is just, as we have the mothers, newborns, Discuss and take appropriate action to implement distribution of Cook's Children Safe Sleep Program brochure in conjunction with issuing newborn birth certificates. Ms. Christine Lefwitcher to explain this.
That's me. Let's see, I did provide a brochure, but I have some extra copies. There we go. So, Judge, your office, I think, actually referred the representatives of this program over to me, and I met with Samantha St. John, I guess it's probably been about six weeks ago, to talk about this program. Other counties are doing it, Tarrant County and Wise County, but essentially, it's, it's just an awareness, it's a community awareness campaign to make sure that newborn babies, you know, sleep alone in their cribs, that they're not sleeping with others, that they're not surrounded by toys and things like that that can cause suffocation. In addition to the brochure, there's a QR code that the recipient of the brochure can scan to get additional resources through the Cook's Children system. And so, what I want to do is just, as we have the mothers, newborns come in and get birth certificates, to be able to give them this brochure, and also have some out on the counter at the annex too, so.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Good idea. I heard the same thing, is that people, the newborn parents will, newborn, new parents will allow children to sleep in between them, and sometimes the parents roll over them and smother them without him doing it.
Exactly.
It's a great idea. I think it's a good deal. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
As I move that we approve the implementation of distribution of the Cook Children Safe Sleep Program brochure in conjunction with issuing newborn birth certificates.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to distribute the Cook Children Safe Sleep Program brochure with issuing newborn birth certificate, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. It's a very important deal. Item Number 3. Discuss and consider approving the judge to sign the Individual Project Order, IPO, from Kimley Horn &amp; Associates to prepare onsite drainage infrastructure plan and profiles for the existing area drain located in the southeast corner of the site, Task 1. Additionally, Kimley Horn will prepare a grading plan specifically focused on the eastern portion of the site, along with the elevations, to assist in the reconstruction of the existing retaining wall at the Acton Annex, Task 2. Two options were provided. One, only Task 1 and Task 2 for a cost of $10,000, or two, a comprehensive assessment which adds Task 3, which is a response to requests for information/site visits during construction for a total fee of $15,000.
Yeah.
Determine the source of the funding. Okay.
So, you might remember, a few courts ago, we brought this up. This is the railroad tie wall that's between the Acton Annex and Family Dollar. And at that time, we decided to table it and see if we could get in touch with the owners at Family Dollar to see if they would participate in the correction of this situation. I don't see Matt Mills here today, but is Alan here? No. So, they did reach out, sent letters to Family Dollar, and basically, they said, "Not our problem." So, in the meantime, Melissa has reached out to TAC on, to see if this would be covered under our property insurance. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to you two to give us an update.
Do you have a deal?
I don't have a report yet.
Okay.
The adjuster was through yesterday morning.
Okay. Leland, do you have anything to say?
Not so much. This project was started before my time here at the county. I've kind of been a sideline on it. I do know that retaining wall, I've looked at it, and on the backside of that retaining wall, we've got a very big void back there. My fear is if we don't find a solution on it, sometime in the near future, the county might be the proud new owners of a Family Dollar.
Okay.
So.
All right, we have one person that wants to speak on this. Tyler Scott. You're with Kimley Horn, aren't you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let you all know I'm here, if you all have any questions. I know I've talked to a couple of y'all here and there when you've had periodic questions, so just wanted to make you all aware of that, so.
Well, I would suggest that we wait to hear back from our TAC property rep before we move forward. Melissa, do you think that's appropriate, or what is your, what is your recommendation?
Well, my thoughts are, if we have a void, it may need to go ahead and be addressed. I don't know what TAC will say. They may be able to contribute some towards the repairs or the replacement, but it sounds like it's going to have to be done no matter what.
And we do have some, I mean, we haven't had rain lately, but we're about to head into another rainy season.
Hopefully.
And both, hopefully, yes. We put the burn ban on, so hopefully, it's going to rain. I know Commissioner Wilson and I both see it, as well as, you know, the people that, the other people that work out there in the Acton Annex. When it pours, that dirt just flows through that retaining wall. You can see the railroad ties shifting, so it does need to be corrected. The, what's on the agenda is to do an analysis and prepare a plan. This isn't to correct it. So, we don't know, at this point in time, what the cost is to remediate the, and build a new wall, or change the wall, or whatever your recommendation's going to be. We, we really don't know what that cost is yet, correct?
Correct. There's, there's essentially two items out there that are going on. There's, there's a drainage issue within the parking lot, which I think anybody that offers out there is aware of. After the rain, it gets pretty inundated in the back there, and it's hard for the water to get out, so that's one item. That drainage issue may be a minor contributing factor to the wall. It may not be. It's not 100% clear, obviously. And then you have the wall issue where the wall's failing. And so, if, if the court chooses to take action, what we can do is, we can hold off until we get feedback from y'all, from TAC, on the wall issue, but move forward on addressing the drainage issue, which is actually in the parking lot. There's a great drain out there in between the two buildings. It's severely undersized, the pipe leading into it, it's like a 2-inch pipe, severely undersized. And so, I think getting that addressed will at least help get the water out of that parking lot area and give you all some relief back there.
Okay. And just to be clear, the main difference between the 10 and the 15,000 is, in the 15,000, whoever is contracted to do the work, you would be, your firm would be available for questions, feedback, discussion during that process?
Correct. And so, I think the way that was structured is, there's the, the two items on the front end that told about 10,000, which are the lump sum items that address, you know, the grading plan for the wall and kind of figuring out a configuration for that, and then the drainage issue. And the second part is that, as y'all move into construction, typically, we keep some sort of budget around for answering questions, if questions comes up, or if they discover things in the field to address those issues and revise the plans if needed, et cetera. And so, that was like an hourly not-to-exceed included in there. So, if you choose to take action on that, great. If you want to hold till after the plans are developed and move to construction, we come back and take action on that. And we can, however y'all would like to proceed on that, we're fine with.
So, just our auditor. We, this is something that we need to put on the list of capital expenses that are, I don't know what amount to put. I don't know if you have any suggestions on an amount to earmark in the next budget season to-
I think, once we get a preliminary design done, at least, at a minimum, we could prepare some OPCs or something to help you all formulate a budget around that.
Okay.
This whole thing is weird. Yeah, I do. Mr. Quine, if you would, are you, are you ready for some questions on this deal? What is our liability on this? This is, this is a very weird situation to me. We're holding the dirt up that the Family Dollar's on, and they're not willing to contribute to help hold that dirt up so that their building doesn't have some issues? It's weird, this wall is on our property, but it's kind of serving them. I think that they've got some responsibility in this thing. If that wall comes down, you know, that you're just going to erode that hill down, and it's going to be a negative impact on their building.
Sure.
It doesn't matter to us.
Come up to me.
We may have to clean some dirt out of the parking lot, and it'd cause some drainage issues, but-
Sure. What you're saying sounds true and correct, that, that the liability ultimately is on the county, I think.
How, how so?
I mean, isn't it on our property?
The, the wall is, yes, but-
All of it's on our property. That's correct.
The drainage is not, so here's, I think this is what came from our reaching out to Family Dollar, was that they're not responsible, and, hey, this has been going on for a really long time, and you're just now bringing it to our attention. Is that basically what, what they said?
Well, it's my understanding, yeah. I, I haven't been that involved with this, but it's on our property, it's affecting others, others, other organizations' properties, so why isn't the responsibility on us?
We could sue them.
Yeah, that's my question, is why, why do we have some kind of obligation to, to put that wall there to, to keep the dirt up, to keep their building from sliding down the hill?
Yeah, I think we do.
Huh. Why is that? I'm, I'm unclear on that. Leland, you?
Sorry to jump in. The email chain I was a part of, that was asking this question, Commissioner was, their building is, existed before the wall existed.
So, that puts the onus on us.
Our building was built after their building, and that wall was built when our building was built, so. Before then, there was no grading, no retaining wall there, and then, when that building was built, the wall was built. That's part of the email chain I saw, why they don't want to take care of it.
Huh. Did we, wait a minute, wait a minute. Could I? Yep, go ahead. So, I'm not sure I agree with, if that, if that wall was not there when they put that building there, and we, and the county didn't put that building there for that matter, did we?
No.
And we bought that property, right? But the wall was not there when they put the Family Dollar, if we took the wall down, we're not changing what they did in the first place, right? Why would we have a duty to maintain that wall? Did we lower, was the construction of that building, did it lower the grade where our building sits? Is that, did it used to be flat, and then we cut the ground out?
I couldn't speak to it. That building was built when I was in elementary school, but it's, it looks like our parking lot was cut out. The ground was lowered for our parking lot to be built.
So, it was more of a sloped grade before?
Yeah, it would have probably been a natural hill in the past, but we've gone back and looked at satellite images, and it's too hard to tell how the ground looked before that building was built.
I mean, if we didn't like the answer we got from Family Dollar that said, basically, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just paraphrasing what the email from Mr. Mills was, "Not our problem, you should, you should, why did you wait this long to notify us? It's been going on for a long time." So, our recourse to that would be to what? File a lawsuit? What, what else could we do when we got the, "No, it's not our problem"?
Well, I'm one for always talking and communicating and trying to resolve issues without necessarily filing a lawsuit.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the extreme measure to take. And so, there's a lot of ways we can mitigate against this before we do something as drastic as that.
What, what would your suggestion be?
Well, talk to them and see if we can work something out.
Well, I thought that's what we've been doing for the last two months.
Well, is, is the communication chain over?
You'd have to ask Matt. I mean, it sounded like it to me from, I don't know, Leland, well, Clint's not here today, but the emails have pretty much been going to Leland, Clint, and I. Did, what, what was your take on it, Leland?
Well, the email chain I was part of, their response was, they don't want to have anything to do with repairing the wall because it's not their wall. They will, after the fact, according to the email chain, is make repairs to their building, kind of divert their water flow coming out the building to prevent, prevent any future damages.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I'm, I'm, if we, sure-
Table it for a change. Can we hear from TAC?
Yes.
Table it for two weeks at least, let's talk to it.
Yeah, and we, we can go, you know, ask Matt to try again, but it sounded like he had run the course on working the relationship angle, but I would definitely-
Tell them about the theory of unjust enrichment. We proved that deal up to keep your building from falling in. We're going to sue you under unjust enrichment. Let their lawyers research it for a while and-
Sure.
See about that, which is true.
Right.
All right, well, with that, I'll make a motion to table Item 3.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to table Item 3, to the next Commissioner's Court, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. And we have up here, hey, this may break the chain. Where is Jeff?
Jeff's at the Tarrant County arson task force conference.
Arson task force. All right, well, Mr. Stafford, you better keep this in mind now. Every time we put a burden ban, it rains a lot, so.
Well, I've got the rain order right here.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think we need it. What's the CDI index?
Yesterday was 622.
622.
And it's been going up, the average of 10 to 15 points a day.
Okay. Well, I think with that reading, there's no question that we need it, don't we?
Right. And we need the rain, so we need both.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make it.
We approve the burn ban for Hood County for 90 days.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to place Hood County under a 90-day burn ban, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Let me have that thing, let's get it into order. I've already signed it. That's, I thought it was going to pass, so. All right. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Okay. Item Number 5. Discuss and take appropriate action to adopt the resolution to disapprove the proposed budget from the Hood Central Appraisal District, HCAD, and request excess surplus and reserve funds to be returned to the taxing entities, and to refund monies paid for unapproved ventures that may be identified in a forensic audit of the prior five years of the HCAD expenditures. Okay, we've got several people signed up for Item Number 5. Do you want to speak on it first?
We can go through the speakers first.
All right. The first speaker is Rick Frye.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioner's Court. This has been an ongoing thing that started back several months ago. First of all, we have brand-new people on the board. We have a brand-new chief appraiser, been there less than 18 months. It's been inferred that all these problems are ongoing, created by us, and it has not been. We've worked very, very hard to try to right the ship, make sure everything's done legally, that everything's done appropriately, and some of the accusations are just false. We've been accused of everything, that we, we haven't thrown the baby out with the wash, we haven't done all the things that they said we've had done. My question is, in the last five years, have we ever came back to you for more money? Have we said, "Oh, we ran out of money, we need to appropriate more money"? Have we done that? No. We've operated within our budget. Just like, there are eight items on this agenda to transfer funds, because you found out, maybe you didn't need it in here, but you're going to move it over here because it can be used better. Well, starting in 2016, they decided to go with the county's retirement fund. It's more attractive, it pays the, the employees more benefits at the end of their, their term. And so, past boards decided that that would be a great idea. And so, they joined. Well, when you join something brand-new, you don't have any account balance whatsoever. And so, to be part of a retirement system, you have to pay money in. And so, they, when they had reserve funds, funds that weren't spent because things like people quit, and you didn't pay the salary for three or four months till you replaced them, along with that, there's all the benefits that go along with the salaries, the insurance, their retirement, all the things. And so, they use that money to take care of an unfunded liability. And so, they did that several years, and they did it through a transfer, just like you're about to transfer money here. Is that bad business? We didn't come back and say, "Oh, we're short $300,000 in this retirement account, y'all pony up the money." They didn't do that, did they? No, what they did was, they identified monies that they did not spend in an approved budget, and moved that line item to take care of an unfunded liability. The previous chairman of that board was a CPA. Unfortunately- Unfortunately, he's passed away, so he can't talk for himself today, but he's a CPA. Do you think a CPA would intentionally violate the rules in a budget? I don't think so. I think he looked at it, he was convinced that this was the right thing to do, and so he did it. Now, let's talk about, they talk about our reserve fund. We, our budget approves, the appropriations go to you guys, and then you pay generally quarterly, we have some that pay it upfront, but quarterly. Twice, that I know of, we had an entity that did not pay on time. We still had payroll to make, we still had all expenses to take, and so is it unreasonable to have about sixty days of funding available so we can meet payroll and other obligations on time without being in default? I think it is. Cities, counties regularly have thousands, millions in some cases, of money that they hold in reserve because of things that happened, that if it interrupts their funding stream, they're able to take care of business and not affect the services they provide. We're the same way. Absolutely the same way. This is a witch hunt. This is a witch hunt of things that happened in the past. If you want to audit, we said, we passed a resolution that if you want an audit, the entities that want an audit, they feel strongly, they can do it. I was appointed by the school district. The school district said, we don't want to do it. It would be a teacher's salary because we're 62% of the funding. We don't have whatever, 62% or whatever the number of the audit is, we don't want to spend that money. We trust you. We think that you're doing a good job. We don't know what happened in the past, but the board that's in place right now is doing the right thing every day, and we trust you to proceed. And so we passed a resolution, said if anybody wants a forensic audit, you pony up, you pay for it, we will open the books and let you have a forensic audit. Is that fair? I think it's fair. But we've been, we've been trying our best to do everything we can to make this a very open and honest. And quite frankly, in years past, people never came to the board. They never came to a meeting, open meeting. In the last eighteen months, we've had a few. I encourage you more to come because we want to be transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Jeff Law.
Thank you, Judge, appreciate that. Members of the Commissioner's Court, I promise that Mr. Frye and I did not sit down and compare notes before we spoke. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today regarding the action item on your agenda to consider disapproving the appraisal district's 2025 adopted budget. I am aware of the resolution that you guys passed back in May of 2024, basically asking the appraisal district board of directors to include money to fund a forensic audit within the 2025 budget. While the county, along with the city of Granbury and the city of Toller, passed comparable resolutions, as Mr. Frye just stated, Granbury ISD took up the same issue in June and decided to, and I quote, suspend the resolution indefinitely, stating that it would be a costly decision for GISD. La Pan ISD also took up the issue, and after discussions, they decided to take no action. The appraisal district board met on August the first to consider passing a resolution pertaining to the audit itself. During the discussion, the board considered all of the viewpoints of all of the taxing units. Three wanted an audit, two did not, and the remaining six, they decided to, they didn't make any official action regarding either, either doing the audit or not doing the audit. The issues of the audit cover questions and topics that took place in the past. Our 2025 budget relates to the future funding of the appraisal district. Your disapproving of this budget won't resolve any of those issues that happened in the past. The appraisal district needs these funds going forward to accomplish our statutorily required duties. If there's no issue with the amounts within the HCAD budget, the HCAD budget is seeking, then there should be no reason for the court to disapprove this budget. I provided an advanced copy of this proposed budget to you all in June of this year. I didn't receive any feedback or questions from you regarding the budget or the amounts within the budget. I would have hoped that you would have contacted me if you had questions or if you've had concerns or anything like that. Well, actually, over the past several weeks, I have spoken with several of you, either in person or by phone, about other issues that the court has been facing. However, our 2025 budget was never brought up during any of those conversations. I'm asking you to please not disapprove this budget, which addresses the needs of the appraisal district's future and going forward. The board and I can continue to work on those issues of the past to see how to move forward. I know our chairman is willing to place the audit on a future agenda, and he's willing to facilitate a plan that will meet everyone's expectations. I appreciate your time here today.
Let me ask you this.
Certainly.
So the 2425 budget, when did you come in as the chief appraiser?
September of 2023, September 18th, 2023.
So, yeah, about a year ago. So the allegations of the misuse and the monies that needed, we, how much money has the appraisal district already distributed to the taxing entities?
Yes, sir. We have returned to the taxing entities a total of $1,908,000 and a few more. $1,908,000.
Oh, and close to $2 million, something like that.
Yes, sir.
Now.
And that was done right before I stepped into the office.
Okay. So are the allegations that there's any withheld monies in the 202425 budget?
That, what we have right now in our fund balance, we just had our audit completed, I think it was last month, and there's $426,000 in our fund balance. $110,000 of that money was obligated and committed to three different funds. One, a litigation fund. A second one was a building repair and maintenance fund, and the third one was a technology fund. So there was, there was $50,001, $40,001, and $20,001. I think that adds up to 110. I have a rule, don't do math in public. But if you take that $110,000 that's committed to a specific item, to specific things, that leaves $316,000, that is what I generally refer to, auditors will call it different things, but I generally refer to as undesignated fund balance. It's not earmarked for any particular thing other than holding it for contingencies, emergencies, reserve-type things. The county has fund balances, the cities have fund balances, and the schools have fund balances. Right now, that $316,000 represents 1.2 months of reserves.
1.2 months.
1.2 months. If we were to have a policy in which I'm going to encourage the board to consider adopting a specific policy, if we were to say have two months' reserves, as Mr. Frye said, to make, make sure that we don't have any lapses with payroll and expenses, that would be about $550,000. And right now, we have $316,000 in fund balance, because we returned 1 point, over $1.9 million last year to all the taxing entities. Now, if you would allow me, I think part of the issues and part of the problems, if you will, is sort of interpretations of how does an appraisal district go about committing or obligating unspent revenue? Mr. Frye said it correctly. I don't, I've only been here one year, but I don't think there's ever been a time in which the appraisal district has come back and asked any taxing entity for more money. We've, we've passed a budget, we've approved a budget, and we've operated within that budget. But entities like us, like you, at the end of the year, you come up with, we have a little bit more revenue than we spent, or, you know, you may have to dip into your reserve accounts because you spent more money than you budgeted for. The appraisal district has been, I think, good stewards of operating within their budgets, and they've had monies left over. Seventy, over 75% of our budget is salaries and employee-related expenses, insurance, retirement, taxes, things of that nature, and salaries. So if I do have some people leave, and then it takes two or three months in order to get them rehired, we wind up with a surplus there. And past board of directors have made a couple of decisions. One is to put money towards the TC DRS, the Texas County and District Retirement System, the same system that the county employees are under. They've decided to put more money there to lower the unfunded liability and to increase that trust fund to make sure it's a good sure trust fund. They've only been in that system since 2016. But other, other times, the board, as you all know, there was an opportunity to possibly build a building, a new building for the appraisal district. And some boards, some board members in the past had decided to take some of that excess proceeds and move it to a building and land building fund, and it's set in our fund balance. That's the money, that's the 1.9, actually a little bit more than, than that was actually refunded back to the entities when that issue came up. So all of the monies that the prior boards would have set aside for a future building was all returned. All the monies that were set aside for TC DRS retirement have been deposited into the trust fund of the entity. And I talked to them the other day, and I said, what's the possibility of giving that back? And the lady told me, she goes, there's a statutory requirement that we could never give that back. I said, please send me the statute. I haven't received it yet. I just made that email yesterday. So there's $316,000 in fund balance that the appraisal district has right now based upon our latest audit. And I would, again, these are issues of.
That's less than two months.
Yes, sir.
Of running the appraisal district.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Frye is correct that there have been entities in this county that have not been timely with their, with their payments to us, and they've, they've all come in. I don't want to mischaracterize that, you know, we didn't, we didn't get the funds that, you know, we were expecting. But they were, there have been times in which they have been late. And I've worked at other appraisal districts where I've seen large, large entities were late three or four months, two or three months, I will say.
So the big contributors to that are the school district first, is 62%.
Yeah, Granbury School District.
62%. Have they ever been late?
Not to my knowledge.
And then Hood County is next. Have we ever been late?
Yes, ma'am.
And when was that?
Last year. Yeah, last year, last year, my board, and I actually was the one that put it on the agenda item, our board actually was asked to, there's, there's a law in the tax code that says if you are late with your payment, there's an automatic penalty that's assessed to the entity that's late. However, the board can choose to waive that penalty. And I put it on the agenda to have the board waive the penalty because the county was late in its.
And that was during the transition of our prior auditor to our new auditor?
No, it was, well, the, no, it was, the tardiness of the payment was from the prior auditor. The transition happened after that payment was made. I don't, I don't think it was a result of the transition.
Okay.
I don't, I can't speak specifically to that.
How late was it?
Um, I don't recall exactly. I don't think it was more.
I mean, was it a day late? Was it a week late?
No, I think it was, I think it was under a month late.
So less than 30 days?
Yeah, probably two to three weeks.
Do you know why it was late?
I don't, I don't.
That was a.
Let me ask you this. That audit that they were talking about, that some people, that the school district that would be taxed, would pan the most of the audit, right? Because they're the biggest contributor. Isn't it proportional to the contribution?
Yes, it would be, and as Ms. Samuelson has said, the school pays about 62, 63% of our revenues, the county pays about 25%, and Granbury, the city of Granbury pays about 7%. And then all the other entities pay something less than the 7%.
Okay, so two questions. Is that if there's an audit, then Hood County is going to have to pay the biggest part of the cost?
Well, the second largest. Y'all have to pay about whatever the cost may be, and the mayor had thrown out, you know, maybe it's going to cost $100,000.
Well, they disapproved having to pay, they didn't want the audit.
Granbury ISD passed a resolution, or passed, made a motion that they did not want to approve the audit because they didn't want to pay for it. They didn't want to pay the 63% share.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Well, would they have to pay it if the audit was done?
If we put the audit in our budget, I mean, that's been part of the issue, is we want to disapprove this budget and make you go back in and put that in the audit. If, yes, if we, if we amend our audit and put $100,000 in the budget for this audit, then Granbury ISD would be forced to pay 63%.
Even though they disproved it?
Yes. I mean, they could turn around and take actions.
Here's my next question. If this has disproved in the 2425 budget, do we already have the audit going on for the previous years?
Yes, the audits, the audit was completed and presented last month for.
Not the forensic audit.
No, I'm sorry. That's a good point, let's be clear. And I'll, and I'll throw this out too, just for clarity. You guys have a fiscal year that spans '24 and '25. The appraisal district has a fiscal year that's the calendar year. So this would be January 1st through December of 2025, just for clarity.
Yeah.
But yes, our financial audit was completed last month over, for the 2023, no, yes, for the 2023 year.
Yeah.
We have not done a forensic audit at this time. As I, as I said, my chairman is willing to continue talking about this. The big issue was, we took this up at our August 1st meeting, and the board did pass a resolution saying that we recognize that there are some that want an audit, and we recognize some that are, that don't want an audit. So the resolution that they passed kind of put it back to the county and put it back to the city, saying if you are willing to pay for the audit in its entirety, then we're willing to, to set up a, establish a scope of work and set it up and do the audit. But really, to me, the issue was who's going to pay for it?
And did you send that resolution out to the taxing entities?
I sent it, yes, we sent it out to all the taxing entities.
Did anyone get it?
Well, I would have sent it most likely to the presiding officer.
So we, I haven't seen it. When did you say you passed it?
We passed it August 1st.
I don't want to interfere with the, with the 202425 budget for, for the Hood County Appraisal District. We've already gotten the money back to almost the $2 million. I don't want to keep you all from doing your job by us disproving your, this budget. Has nothing to do with the kept monies, that's already been decided. You refunded back the $2 million, you just need this reserve, which is less than two months, for purposes of running the appraisal district. Am I understanding that correctly?
I believe, I believe you are, sir.
There's other things. If we can move on, was there another speaker?
Yes, there is another speaker. Thank you, Ms. Law. The next speaker is Jim Jarrett.
There's, it's, once we get past the speakers, I'll go into the issues with the current budget, but there's many things that, this isn't just about the things that happened in the past. Good morning, Mr. Mayor Jarrett.
Good morning. We had this discussion at city council just this past week, and Mr. Law stood and, and worked with us for two hours and three minutes. So we're going to get the consolidated version tonight. We did pass the ordinance that, we did pass a resolution to disapprove the budget, to reduce it by about $500,000, and to request a forensic audit be occurred. And this, you know, this is a continuation, and this is a conversation, and the appraisal district has been more than forthcoming on providing information and, you know, working with, you know, with the conversation. What it comes down to me is that this is, it's, it's a fat budget. Otherwise, if it's not a fat budget, between the years of 2016 and 2021, $1.8 million over and above the actuarial requirement was submitted and input into the retirement fund. Now, there may have been a lot of agreement on that, but has anybody heard that number of $1.8 million? Because that's what it costs. And that's what each citizen had in their budget, or they had, I mean, we're paying for that. You know, the school talks about, well, we're going to pay 66%. Well, the citizens are paying 100% of money that is going into a budget that is, I mean, into an entity that is appointed officials that are spending money that I say is, that the entities don't know about. They're not there. Now, what that results in, and I laid this out there for you, is a cost per parcel. A parcel is the work unit of a appraisal district. And these numbers, I don't want you to say, oh, these are exact, because they're not, and they are subject to different buckets of parcels that may, may require more money, less money, E-Rath may have more, less, whatever. But I do want to point out that E-Rath has been able to maintain a pretty steady expense. While we had a, I say, a fat budget. While we had a, I say, a fat budget, and then we built on the fat budget. Otherwise, how do you come to the year of 2021 through 2023 and it's $2,920,000 that were able to be moved out of excess funds? We got a million 908 back. There's another 100. Where is that? Well, there's another 293 coming back in 2023, or 2024, we just heard. And contrary to what I heard earlier, there have been charges or expenses over the last few months, or the last, well, since December. December 23, the appraisal district approved 200 and something thousand dollars for an architectural firm. There are 387,000 documented dollars that have been paid to an architectural firm in the last three years. And there was never approval for the appraisal district to go build a building. And Mr. Law and I are, and we're in very clear agreement on that. So, we have said, as the city, no, reduce the budget, get it back down to a reasonable level and manage the, manage the operation efficiently. Don't have 21 people to do about the same number of parcels that are being done by 17 right up the road in a, you know, I think a comparable type of environment. Something happened in 21, 22. You see it on the charts. You see it in their maps program, the Texas Controller of Public Accounts. The 2021 budget said, on all categories, it was, it was meets, meets all. 2021, or 2022, 23 preliminary, needs significant improvement on governance, unsatisfactory taxpayer assistance, unsatisfactory operating procedures, and meets all appraisal standards. Now, Mr. Law's history is that he gets a score of about 97. So, this would not be a problem in, under his tutelage. And I believe that it will get corrected. But there's a bit, there's more than just a dollar problem here. There's another problem in this appraisal district that we need to get addressed. So, I think, we think, the city council thinks five to one. And the head of the appraisal district is the one that said, no. But we think that this budget needs to be disapproved, reduced to $500,000, and a forensic audit occur. Speaking of audit, they just completed their audit. The 2023 audit had to be severely restated because of the numbers that were in the 2022. Took out for the 1.9 million that came back. And then, an extra chart that now is, makes it very visible, that we put 1.8 million dollars into a retirement plan over and above what is actuarially required. And that was to buy back. I understand that. But did we know it at the time? And did we know that we were going to spend 1.9 million on a building at the time? We didn't. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Do you have a question? How much is it going to cost?
There hasn't, no one's asked for a-
I went on, I went online, looked. It said anywhere from 40 to 100, or it said 10 to 100. I came with 100. I didn't, you know, you don't know until you do the scope. But now, I think the scope's bigger than five years. I think you got to go back to 2016, find out what the heck happened that we started writing half million dollar checks to TCDRS.
Yeah, I actually was going to ask Mr. Law while he was up here if they had requested, have you gone out for an RFP to get a specific scope of an audit or to know what it's going to cost? So, I mean, it could be, we have some examples of an IT audit here today that range, there's a wide range depending on what the, what the people responded to. But, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be 100,000. I mean, it could be 40,000. But I didn't know if you had gone out and given a, gotten a better quote. Yeah, sure.
No, we, we have not gone out and done an RFP or anything like that and received any kind of quotes back at this particular time.
Okay. So, the resolution, I, when did the city pass the resolution for the forensic audit? Was that also in May or? At late April?
Yeah, well, you, you guys passed it in May of 2024 and the city did it a week or two before that. So, I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was late April.
Okay.
I know, I know you guys' meetings are very rigid and set, yes. But they did theirs first and then you guys did yours.
So, since that time, there's been no investigation as to what might this actually cost?
No, there's, we have, I mean, as the mayor said, you know, a scope of work would have to be developed. At that particular time, he was talking five years. If he, if he wants to extend it back to 2016, I'm sure that's just going to drive the cost up because you're going, auditors will have to look at more stuff. But, no, we haven't, we haven't gone out and done anything official because there hasn't been an official determination to whether we're going to do the audit. And then, as I said earlier, when the Granbury ISD decided, you know, they didn't want to have anything that, you know, they needed an audit, didn't feel like they needed an audit. Again, it just kind of tapped the brakes a little bit until-
Well, they did that based on what they thought was the cost. If the cost was 40,000, they might change their mind.
That's possible.
Also, basically, I mean, in the, I listened to part of the Granbury ISD Town Hall, I guess it was called last night. It wasn't a, a school board meeting. But one of the things that was mentioned was, there's a potential, it may cost you, let's say it's 40,000, they're part 62%. I'm not going to do the math in public, but that would be, I mean, they have a potential to find additional funds, errors and omissions, whatever could come into play. There could be a return that's more than the 62% of their cost. And we won't know that until we do the audit to know-
Oh, I, I don't disagree.
So, it would be good to, you know, to try to get some, it's kind of the chicken and the egg. We're not going to do it because it's going to cost too much, but we really don't know how much it's going to cost. So, we need to know what the cost is. So, anyway, that was my question. Thank you.
Certainly.
We've got one more speaker. Thank you, Ms. Law. Jeff David Ferris.
Good morning, everyone. I think everybody knows me. Glad I ended up last. I got a whole lot more information than I wanted. I'm here, first of all, I'll state that, yes, in my opinion, you must do a forensic audit. It's not like, has there never been a problem? There's 1.9 million dollars worth of problem, you know, without question. As a taxpayer, I really want to know what other problems are I've had, hence that there may be problems. And if you don't do a forensic audit, then me as a taxpayer, consider it trying to cover up. General feeling. I do want to also go back to a comment that was made by, we need to keep two months to pay salaries. Wait a minute, where's that money coming from? The taxpayers? Could this court please guarantee that every taxpayer in the county has two months of savings in case they don't get a paycheck? No. Taxpayers don't have any guarantee of a paycheck. Maybe there was an issue with one check from the county that was late. I have no problem, at least knowing what, you know, having some resolution to know what a problem is and get it addressed quickly, because nobody knows why the check was late, how late it was. That's fine, you know? Do something to address the missed check. Don't keep two months of taxpayers' money, roll it over into next year in a slush fund. Do that for every entity in the county. And that's going to be a whole lot of money. All right? Taxpayers live paycheck to paycheck. And as far as the need of forensic audits, things of that nature, well, I'll be back for the IT audit, because I do have some issues on that one too. But I am definitely for the audit there. All right? Please do the forensic audit. We need to see what the problems are, how deep they are. And, yeah, they may have been done by a CPA. That doesn't mean they're correct. I actually know somebody that was a CPA at a little company called Enron. Everything they did was through some CPAs. That doesn't mean it was correct. All right? And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. I believe that's all, isn't it? You know, that's all the speakers that we have.
As, as Mr. Law said and Mr. Frye, this resolution is a continuation of the communication between Hood County and the Hood Central Appraisal District to correct some of past behavior that did not align with Tax Code 6.06, specifically allocating budget funds to unapproved expenses about 977,000 over the last six years. Drew, if you could bring up, and I don't know if Drew or Ashley's over there, I can't see, but whoever's over there. Yeah, if you could bring up the link that says analysis. Yeah. This shows, okay, so, not returning the excess budget funds to the taxing entities and, at the end of the fiscal year. Additionally, looking at the history, the actual approved expenses have not exceeded 2.5 million in any of the last five years. That's the fourth line down? Yeah. In the, any of the last five years. So, why is there a need for a 7.4% increase to a little over $3 million for this year? We have been over this several times in this court and at HCAD board meetings. To comply with Tax Code 6.06, excess funds are to be returned to the taxing entities or credited to the next year's assessment. We have also requested a forensic audit to identify other funds that should be returned to the taxing entities or where there have, may be a need to implement best practices. As far as I know, and heard a little bit more today, the forensic audit has not been taken up or planned by HCAD. Looking at the seven months ending July 31st, which was the last budget posted on the HCAD website, there is $100,000 in contingency and $10,000 in capital outlay that have not been, they were allocated by the taxing entities through the last year's budget process, but they haven't been allocated to anything. So, it looks like there is money in the current budget to take up that we've already committed to pay that could take up a forensic audit. Additionally, the efficiency of the staff should be addressed. Drew, if you could show page two called the report. There should be a, another link called report. There, if you could go to page two. This is from Glenn Hager, the comptroller, which Mayor Jarrett mentioned, but here it is. If you can see that the, in the last, the 2022, 23 Final Methods and Assistance Program Review, Operating Procedures and Taxpayer Assistance Received a Score of Needs Significant Improvement. When interim chief appraiser, Mr. Petrie was here, he mentioned the commonly used metric of parcels per appraiser for Hood Central was considerably lower than other counties with similar numbers of parcels. And Mayor Jarrett confirmed that with his look at E-Rath County. With that said, I don't see a reason to allocate more of taxpayer money to a third-party contractor until such time as the taxing entities have assurances that the policies, practices, and procedures have been improved and that all unauthorized funds have been returned to the taxing entities. Some specifics on the budget, if you'll go to the budget link. It's probably within that resolution. It might be actually in the resolution. There's a chief appraiser at 198,000, which includes 8,000 in car allowance, deputy chief appraiser, which is a new position, at 130,000, which includes a car allowance, appraisal manager at 109,000, including a $9,600 car allowance, for a total of 437,000 in salary. Now, that does not include benefits and the 12% that goes into the TCDRS retirement. Just as note, Hood County puts in close to 10? Is it 9.9 into the retirement? So, that's three people to manage eight appraisers. Three pretty significantly paid people to manage eight appraisers. Then also, there's an office manager, executive assistant at 117,000, which includes an $8,000 car allowance. Additionally, 12,000, oh, sorry, 12% into TCDRS. So, why do we need so much overhead to manage eight appraisers? Anyway, I, I'll go through the resolution. There's lots of information out on, I mean, I'll say, on a positive note, that Mr. Law has done a significantly improved job at providing information to the taxpayers on the Hood Central Appraisal District. It's much more user-friendly. It's much easier to find things. And I think that he mentioned, kind of in passing it, and maybe the, the hospital district meeting, that they were, they should or were thinking about recording or live streaming their meetings. I think that would be excellent because I think they're at 5:00 on Thursday night, some, not sure if it's always the third Thursday night of the month. But I think that'd be excellent for there to be more transparency, to live stream, record, and post those videos, as we've started doing with the hospital district meetings. But, so, thank you for your, more information and easier to find information on the appraisal district website.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you, can you come back up for a minute? I'm sorry. One of the, one of the questions that I did want to kind of throw out here for the general public is, when we go through this, we go through an, an audit like this and we find these discrepancies or misappropriations, the various things that, that this audit would uncover, what recourse do we have with that? What happens when we get that? This, go ahead.
Let's say possibly uncover. I, you know, I have no, I have no sense that there's anything really to uncover. But it is, it's the process and the procedures. What got us there is, you know, my, you know, the main thing that I think that we're going to uncover is that, and we are going to find some agreement on what are committed funds and how can committed funds be right now. Mr. Law and I, you know, we have a disagreement. And we discuss it. And I'm sure at some point lawyers will resolve that, that agree, that disagreement. But with the, with the identification of process and procedures that were erroneously performed, then you have an errors and omission claim that we can file with our insurance company. And errors and omissions, they occur. That's why you have an insurance program for that. That's why we pay into it. And at that point, we would seek the restitution. And that's, the restitution that I look at right now is 387,000 that's been paid to an architectural firm over the last three years and for surveys on, on school property that we, that the appraisal district did not own. And with the ground blasting radar studies, all of that adds up to 387,000 that, that's the claim I would make at this point. The 1.9 got returned. The 1.8 that's in the retirement fund? I don't know. That just came out in the latest audit after the auditors, and they changed auditors this past year. After the auditors were changed and they restated the 2022 results to reflect the 1.9 and to reflect and to identify- and to identify the 1.8 that's in over and above the, what is it, the, or the actuarial rate. So through an errors and omissions claim.
Okay, and that's, that's what I wanted to make clear here is that this isn't, there's the potential to recover funds through, through a claim here that are significant funds. We're talking about close to $400,000 in this deal as a possibility. There's no guarantee that that, that any of that comes to fruition.
It's our, it's our insurance company. I mean, it's the insurance company that we have that, that embraces all of Texas, the Texas Municipal League Insurance Company. So we're saying, hey, we want our money back.
Right, and I think that that's why we passed the resolution earlier this year asking for that forensic audit. Say, hey, there's, there, there have been, I don't know the right way to phrase this, some questionable things here. Let's get the, let's get an audit in here to come in and take place, establish where we are with this and then potentially file a claim. I don't think that this is a witch hunt. I think that we're looking to make things right. And, and Rick, I would, there's, I'm not questioning your integrity at all. I have all the faith in the world with you. And, and that's not, that's not what we're after. I think that there's something in the past that, that does need to be exposed. We do need to take a look at that for the taxpayers, for the transparency on that deal and recover those funds.
And one thing that Ms. Samuelson mentioned, you know, about the cost. This is, this, you know, yes, the HCAD have not come back and asked for any money for the last eight or nine years because they had close to $4 million over and above what that had been budgeted, over and above that they, that they spent. We budgeted 10 million. They spent five on activities. And the rest of the five, they said, oh, we'll spend it here. We'll spend it here, spend it here. You know, we had hamburgers ordered down here and everybody got ice cream up here. I'm like, come on. You know, if you budget for what you need, you shouldn't end the year at 25% in excess of your budget. They only have a two-and-a-half to $3 million budget. It's, it's, I mean, to find out, find $2.8 million in excess funds as per the audit reports for the years 2018 through 2023. On, I guess they budgeted 30 million? Yeah, over that period of time? That's not, that's just not good-type budgeting. And I, and I do appreciate, I appreciate too what Mr. Law has done this year. He's opened, he has opened the door for us to look inside.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate that.
But Drew, there's a page, I think it's connected to the resolution that shows the analysis. It might be the very bottom of the, if you, next page maybe, all the way at the end of the budget. So it's, you're gonna have to scroll quite a ways. There it is. Oh, it's kind of small. Can you make it bigger? There we go. Very, this is, I think, Mayor Jarrett, is this what you were mentioning? Where'd it go? Yeah. So this, this kind of outlines where the excess revenue fund balance went when it should have been returned to the taxpayers. Any other comments?
So something that's been eating on me about this whole deal, just like with the situation coming up on the IT, is why do we have so much resistance on auditing and doing an outside audit of a government entity? Why is there so much resistance to this? We, and as far as the commissioners are concerned, we're elected officials. We work for you. We represent the taxpayers. HCAD is not elected. None of the Board of Directors are elected. They are unelected bureaucrats that are appointed by the taxing entities. And it just so happens there's five of them and four of them pretty much are GISD-leaning board members. Yes, GISD is the biggest taxing entity and they have the most voice in HCAD. This is no aspersions to anybody currently on this board. It's merely an exercise into trying to get at what happened in the past when a straw company was set up and there's emails back and forth amongst some of the members, not these today, about how do we, how can we do this and get around the letting the public know what we're doing? Now, that right there, that one email, as far as I'm concerned, is all I need to ask for a forensic audit. But I want to, I want to go through some stuff. I've heard a lot of stuff today about, and I appreciate Mr. Frye's service. And I went to the HCAD meeting the other day and everybody, all the board members except one were pretty proud of their budget. And I understand that. They worked hard to get there. But I remember going to an HCAD meeting probably in 2018 or 19. It hadn't just been recently, by the way. And it was the, it was a meeting where they were deciding what to do with the surplus. They had, I don't know, $300,000 or $400,000 left that they overbudgeted. They overbudgeted. And so what did they do? They voted to roll most of that into their retirement program. Now, as a, as a taxpayer sitting out here on the bench, I was kind of angry about that because I thought, well, let's, let's look at this. If we overbudget every year and then roll the, the surplus into our retirement program, who are we taking care of? I don't think it's the taxpayers, but their financial period starts on January the 1st. This is August. So if we bump this for 30, if we disapprove this today and it takes another 30 days, there's no exigency here for them to go back and rethink this. And it, and it could be that the other entities vote to go, vote to not ask for this, to disapprove, and they go forward. Anyway, despite what the city thinks, despite what the county thinks. And I, I think about, I go back to the point where have they ever come and asked us for any more money? No, they hadn't had to. They get plenty the first time. And they've got overage every year, plenty. I have a problem with, with a, with a reserve balance for them. And here's, for really much anything. Their funding source is the taxing entities. What are there, nine, 10, something like that? And our funding source is y'all. And so, and there's a, a big system here how they appraise your houses. And we set the tax rate. We're gonna talk about that later today and how much your taxes are gonna be. And then they have a, part of their existence is dependent on how much revenue is collected and then we pay a certain amount. GISD pays a certain amount, 63% of it. I don't care what GISD thought or did. One of their members, former president of the GISD, was part of what we're looking into. So I wonder what the motivation is with that. I'm just asking questions here. And one of the, one of the people that was involved in that has moved on now. He's gone to bigger and better things up in South Lake, Texas. But this audit we're asking for is to check what happened in the past. The not approving the budget as it stands is to send a message A. and, and ask you to go back and rethink your position on your budget. They've already admitted, they sat right here. They came up to this microphone and said that they've given us back $1.9 million from past issues. Don't we have a right to look a little further into that? I mean, don't you think we should as working for y'all? He said now, out of the $426,000 in fund balance, that $110,000 is obligated. Okay, that still leaves 316 unassigned fund balance. Why does an entity that works for the entities need a savings account? Because that's what an unassigned fund balance is. And we've talked about that for the county. How much unassigned fund balance should we have? That's enough if, if, I guess if the world came to an end, we could operate for a month or two, which, you know, after two months and the world came down, it wouldn't make any difference anyway. Or do we have, and our argument has been, or not argument, but our discussion has been, do we have two months? Or some think a couple of months is fine. Some would like to have six or seven months in unfunded fund, or fund balance that's unassigned. And these, a lot, most of this is policy decision. And yes, cities, a taxing entity with elected officials has a, has an unassigned fund balance. The county does so as well. And I would assume that the other little cities in here would have some sort of unassigned fund balance, probably not much. And I'm sorry I'm jumping around here. I'm just trying to get to some, some notes that I jotted down while, while I was listening. But 70, I heard this, 75% of the appraisal district's budget is salaries. But we, the county, the city, the school district supplies the money that we get from y'all to pay their salaries. So I don't think it's unreasonable for Commissioner Samuelson to ask them, are you doing this, are you doing your job efficiently? That's another question. I know that Mr. Law's come in recently. So this is not his baby as far as in the past is concerned. But there's a difference between a forensic audit and an audit audit. When they get an audit done, they give the information to the accounting firm, just like we do, and they just use that information and take it as true. And then they provide us with an audit. And then they, they might call the auditor and ask a question for this and a question for that. But they're taking your stuff as true. A forensic audit is looking at it and going, I don't know, I'm not really sure that's true or not. I'm gonna take it as not true. So there may be nothing going on two, three, four years ago, but that email I just told you about, doesn't that give you a question? And should we turn our, turn our heads away from that? And why are we being resisted? It's, if it's $40,000 or $100,000. To know and wouldn't, wouldn't you think that they would want to get this over with and get it done where they can say, all right, it's done, now we can move on with a clean slate? I'm not quite done. So I'm, I'll finish with this, I promise you. Our current chair, the current chairman of that board of directors is also on the City Council. And he's one of the biggest resistors of having this done. I don't know why. And he, he'll look into it. No, we don't need to look into it. We need to do it, in my opinion. And actually, the forensic audit is off-topic. So I'll shut up.
Anybody else have any comment? If not, do I hear a motion?
Well, just in, just in summary before I read through the resolution, the, the main points are to take into consideration the three prior resolutions that have come through this court and to, you know, take action with those. Also, to look at your budget. Like I mentioned, I wasn't clear about it, so I'm gonna be a little bit more clear when I was mentioning the chief appraiser, the deputy chief appraiser, which is a new position, new being added this year or requested this year, and appraisal manager. All over $100,000. We went through this last year during the budget season with the appraisal district and said, appraisal manager, deputy chief appraiser, both making over $100,000. To manage a staff of eight appraisers, you don't need both. So pick one or the other. I think there was, I think Mr. Rowe mentioned when he was here last year that when the prior chief appraiser left unexpectedly, they asked the appraisal manager to step up and take over and that person refused to do that. In the real world, that would be called insubordination and that person would no longer be there. I guess it's different in the government world, but you don't add another job of $130,000 just because one person won't do their job. I know that's harsh, but that's the reality and this is taxpayer money and I feel like it needs to be said. So with that, I will read through this resolution. Hood County Commissioners Court Resolution to Disapprove the Proposed 2025 Budget for the Hood Central Appraisal District and to Request Excess Surplus and Reserve Funds to be returned to the taxing entities and to return monies paid for unapproved ventures that may be identified in a forensic audit of the prior five years of the HCAD expenditures. Whereas, Section 6.06 of the Tax Code requires the chief appraiser shall prepare a proposed budget for the operations of the district for the following tax year and submit copies to each taxing entity participating in the district and to the district board for directors, for, before June 15th. And whereas, the chief appraiser shall include in the budget a list showing each proposed position, the proposed salaries for the position, all benefits provoked, proposed for the position, each proposed capital expenditure, and an estimate of the amount of budget that will be allocated to each taxing entity. And whereas, the Hood Central Appraisal District, HCAD Board of Directors held a public hearing to consider the budget and the HCAD Board of Directors completed its hearings, made amendments to the proposed budget, and approved the budget on August 15th, 2024. And whereas, the governing bodies of the major entities of the taxing units entitled to vote on the appointment of the board members, adopt resolutions disapproving the budget and file them with Secretary of the Board within 30 days after the adoption. The budget does not go into effect and the board shall adopt a new budget within 30 days of the disapproval. And whereas, Section 6.06J of the Texas Tax Code provides if the total amount of payments made or due to be made by the taxing units participating in the appraisal districts exceeds the amount actually spent or obligated to be spent during the fiscal year for which the payments were made, the chief appraiser shall credit the excess amount against each taxing unit's allocated payments for the following year in proportion to the amount of each unit's budget. I'm gonna stop right here. That does not mean roll it into fund balance. That means re-credit to the taxing entities. Allocation, budget allocation for the fiscal year for which the payments were made. If a taxing unit that paid its allocated amount is not allocated a portion of the district's budget for the following fiscal year, the chief appraiser shall refund to the taxing unit its proportionate share of the excess funds, not later than the 150th day after the end of the fiscal year for which the payments were made. And whereas, Hood County Commissioners Court adopted a resolution on July 31st, 2023 to disapprove the 2024 budget in accordance with Tax Code 6.06. And whereas, the Hood County Commissioners Court adopted a resolution on December 22nd, 2023, rejecting the creation of the three new committed fund accounts and calling on HCAD, HCAD to return the 2023 excess funds proportionately to the taxing entities in compliance with Texas Tax Code 6.06. compliance with Texas Tax Code 6.06. I'm stopping again. You heard about those funds when Mr. Law was up there, and we had requested that they not create those funds last December. Whereas Hood County Commissioners Court adopted a resolution on May 28th, 2024, calling on the Hood County Appraisal District to conduct a forensic audit. And whereas the Hood County, or the HCAD's 2025 proposed budget, Exhibit A, is 7.4% higher than the adopted 2024 budget and includes in addition of a deputy chief appraiser at a salary of 122,000 plus benefits, making the addition to the budget approximately 150,000. And whereas HCAD's independent audit report for the year ending December 31st, 2023 states the following on page six. The general fund is the chief operating fund of the district. At the end of the fiscal year, the district's general fund reported an ending fund balance General Fund Budgetary Highlights. The original budget presented a balanced budget. Reserves and expenditures were budgeted at 2.955764. There were no budget amendments during the year, but there were line item transfers. The actual revenues were 7,868 more than fiscal, fiscal final budget. Actual expenses were 286,561 less than budgeted. The district experienced an overall favorable budget surplus of 294,429. Whereas since 2018, HCAD has shown a pattern of adopting an inflated annual budget and then using those funds for purposes not approved by the taxing entities in the total amount of approximately 2.8 million, which you saw on that detailed list, Exhibit B, over the past five years. Whereas HCAD has seemingly disregarded the importance of the prior resolutions adopted by this Commissioners Court. Now therefore be it resolved by the Hood County Commissioners Court that the Hood Central Appraisal District is, the budget of the appraisal district is hereby notified and informed that the proposed 2025 budget is disapproved by the Hood County Commissioners Court and that the HCAD 2023 annual audit identified an excess of funds that have been accumulated by HCAD, and these funds are hereby requested to be distributed to the taxing jurisdictions in the same proportional amount, share as when they were collected. And be it further resolved that HCAD will fund and conduct a forensic audit for all financial records since 2017 and ensure that the state laws that govern HCAD and the inter-local agreements between HCAD and the taxing entities that funds HCAD for operations that have adhered to the, are, and properly, that are adhered to and properly executed. And the surplus funds accounted for in the forensic audit be returned back to the taxing entities as required by state law. The forensic audit shall also document the accounting procedures and budget amendments that have been completed either with or without legal notice to the taxing entities of said budget amendments as provided by the Texas state law. If the forensic audit reveals that amendments have been made that are not in accordance with the required notice and approval by the taxing entities listed in accordance with the Texas law, a full report will be delivered to the taxing entities of where those funds were sent and who benefited from the expenditures. And that HCAD will agree to comply with Texas Tax Code Title I, Property Code, Subtitle B, Property Tax Administration, Chapter 6, Local Administration, Subchapter A, Appraisal Districts, and to comply with the interlocal agreements for collection and administration of the respected taxing entities. And that this resolution be delivered to Hood County Appraisal District, Senator Birdwell, Representative Slosson, and Glenn Hager, Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts. This resolution shall take effect and be in full force immediately from and after its date of adoption shown below. So I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll second it.
I am sure to adopt.
One comment to make.
I believe all prior resolutions about having the audit and refunding the money resulted in about $9 million. But this current budget, under current order and expected our chief appraiser Jeff Law, what he's been doing, he's been, it's been such a gigantic group. Yeah, I feel like they've been totally transparent and honest with the people. They've been a pleasure to work with, to keep up the information, to my office, to my secretary.
I'm not in favor of this resolution because it's disproven. Their 20, their 2025 budget here, I think that there, that has. The audit for all those prior years, you bet, I'm for that. Let's go ahead and do, let's do the prior audit, let's get it over with, let's see. But to punish the current board when they have worked diligently for the citizens of the county, I am not in favor of that. That's, if this resolution did not have disproven their current budget, I would be all for it.
It goes back to doing a forensic audit for all those years, and we did add that those $2 million.
Oh, it's on the deal. But then to punish this board by saying, no, we're not going to approve your current budget. They know that we've been looking at them. Every taxing entity that makes up this whole appraisal district has been looking at them through a microscope, not a magnifying glass, a magnifying scope, holding them to a high standard, and I think that they perform. And who are we to come up here and tell them they don't know what they're doing? And that they're going to have to cut their budget some more? I'm opposed to that. That's my two cents on it. I would oppose. For all prior years to have a forensic audit, but not for the current budget of 2024, 2025. Anybody else have any comment?
I think, they haven't cut their budget, they've raised it 7.4%. When you said cut it more, they've actually raised their budget.
A lot of it, when you go to the grocery store, you don't fill up your car with gasoline, and you don't buy clothes, and you don't do a lot of things. Everything has gone up, and it's, and the comptroller and everybody else says the inflation rate is between 3 and 8%. It takes this amount, these guys are up there, it probably takes to get qualified people to get the kind of service we want from our appraiser district, we're going to have to pay for these people, especially when it's been in the ditch for so many years. And that's what I'm saying. I'm not going to second guess them on this deal. They're their experts on the deal. They know we're watching them. They know that we're going to get a forensic audit for the prior years. I don't think that anybody's on that current board, and Jeff Law is going to be doing anything even remotely illegal or unethical to do that. So for that reason, I'm opposed to signing this particular resolution because it calls for disapproving the 25, the 2025 current budget of the Central Appraisal District.
You realize that that doesn't mean they, that we're not disapproving it forever. They can go back and sharpen their pencil and cut some things out and come back, right? You realize that?
Well, of course I realize they have, until they, they can do it, but that's not what this is. That's why I'm not going to put my signature to this document because it says disapproving that and having a financial audit on, on that, so.
That's how the process works. We disapprove it, they, if all the tax, if enough taxing entities.
Thank you for reading it to me and making the understanding.
I call a question, please.
All those in favor?
I think Commissioner Eagle had a comment.
Well, he called a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
All right. No, that's fine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So the ayes have it three to two. Okay.
Motion for a break.
No break. Let's kick here to the next one so Leland can go back here.
Okay.
Approve facilities maintenance to remove the oak tree in the north flowerbed at the You got photographs in here? The photographs convince me.
Yeah.
It needs to go, doesn't it?
The tree's a concern to the foundation there at the library. I don't want to remove it, it's a really old tree, but I don't want to come back in a couple of years and ask for a new foundation either, so. I had an arborist out yesterday, and he confirmed my opinion that tree needs to go, so that's why I'm asking for your blessing today.
I hate.
I have the budget for it, I'm not asking for money for it, so I'm just asking the blessing of the court to remove that tree.
I'm like Johnny Appleseed, I like all trees, I hate to see any tree goes, but if, if it has to do it, it's either that or the foundation, it's a pretty easy question. Anybody else have any questions?
That's right there at the entrance steps, correct?
It's off to the right of the entrance in the flowerbed.
Nobody else, I hear a motion?
I move that we authorize the, you know, facilities maintenance to remove the oak tree in the north flowerbed at the library.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Wilson to allow facilities maintenance to remove the oak tree in the north flowerbed at the library, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Carry on. Thank you, Leland. Now we're going to take a break. It's 11:27, we're back on the record, and we are at item number seven. Discuss and take appropriate action to accept a proposal, including signature if required from an IT consulting firm to conduct an audit slash assessment of Hood County's IT department. Mr. Glenn Tillman.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. So as directed by the court, I obtained five proposals from consultants for an audit and assessment of our IT infrastructure, security processes, and practices. And there's basically a recap of, of the quotes up on the screen for you. They all appeared to meet the scope of work, which was based on what was approved in court. They're all experienced companies. Two of the five currently have CEGIS clearances, the other three are willing to obtain them. Three are based in Texas, the other two are not, but have permanent employees in Texas. And that's basically the gist of, of what, what I came up with. The, the scope of work was, was, basically was, it was a little vague, basically to allow the consultants to look at our goals and determine how to achieve those goals rather than me tell them how to, how to do their job specifically. And that's probably why there is, there is a variance on the outsides on the prices, but generally, three out of the five are, are pretty close there in the middle. And I hope you've had a chance to possibly look at the proposals and, and go from there.
Yeah, I've had a chance to look. Do we have anybody from one of the companies here today?
Say your name and which company you're with.
Good morning, I'm Eddie Gossett with SLG Technologies. We're based out of Glen Rose. So I just wanted to bring up, I know I've been here all morning listening to some of the comments and, about an audit, and I want you to consider that an IT audit is not like a normal financial audit or something where there's, you know, you, you assess penalties at the end, right? An IT audit, from my perspective, is something where we come in and help the current team identify risk, right, with, with the current environment. IT is very unique, there are threats that change daily, if not hourly, okay? You, you can look in the news and go back just within a couple of months, and you can see huge companies that have been attacked and breached because of IT issues. And they, they have outstanding IT departments, so it's nothing against the IT department, I just want to lay that out there. It's, this is not, you know, something where we're going to come in and attack your IT department. This is a collaboration effort where we come in and assess the environment and make recommendations on improvements as far as processes and security. So it's not, I don't like using the word audit the IT department because it's not the department, it's the network, right? We're assessing the network and how that's managed, how that's maintained, and the security of it to make recommendations on improvements. That's, that's our job. So I just want to kind of lay that out there.
Let me ask you something.
Yes.
You know, this has been brought up now, three consecutive commissioners' courts in a row about, quote, "an audit of an IT department." And at each one of them, I keep saying that our IT department has passed the ultimate test, and that is an actual hack by a very real sophisticated outside source. Our IT department caught it almost immediately and took steps, and it was such a serious, the people that, it was the FBI, Homeland Security, DPS was here almost immediately because it was something about the footprint or whatever that these people were really concerned about this particular hacker. And because of the diligence and training and the system that our IT department had in place, we didn't lose any information, they didn't ransom us at all, it didn't cost us any money. Now, our neighbor, Parker County, and the city of Granbury, they both got successfully hacked, and it was devastating to them. It was millions of dollars, they were shut down, they were using pencil and paper for a long time. And for what you just got through saying, you come up here and you do an accounting or an assessment, I like your word better, an assessment of what they're doing. And these hackers are ever persistent, they're changing their methodology minute by minute.
Absolutely.
And there's a million of them out there, and they're constantly trying to hack your system. Well, isn't what our IT department did by actually catching this and not getting it out where the people, our closest people to us, Granbury and Parker County, whatever they were doing, unfortunately, they were successfully hacked? Doesn't that say something for our IT department?
It does. It does, and I can't speak specific to that instance because I don't know what the, the attack was, but, I mean, it's, you know, to, to deny that there is, you know, something out there that you can assess and constantly improve on, I mean, that's, you know, our whole goal is to constantly improve on security, improve on processes, and make things better, right? That's the whole thing. If, if you are breached tomorrow, that could cost the county millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So, so this, and, and I'm not up here trying to sell my company by any means. We're super busy, so I, I honestly, I don't need your business. It's, this is something that we can provide to you, but what, I would highly recommend that you choose a company to help just come in and do an assessment. And almost, you need to do that annually, if not every couple of years. And it's nothing, it's not an attack on, on your department by any means.
I know you said technologies, which one was it, SLG or MGT?
SLG, second one up there.
The SLG.
Yes, sir.
All right. So.
What would you exactly do? How did you do an assessment? How is that really going to help our department? Given the history, is that just related?
So anytime you get a second set of eyes, right, and, and I'm not perfect, right? Anytime I get a second set of eyes, if I'm working on something, it's better to have multiple people looking at it from different angles, different experiences, right? So I don't know what his experiences are, or, or the IT department or anything like that, but having somebody come in and, and just review what's been done, we may come in and say, hey, they passed with flying colors, everything's great. But if you find one incident on the network that needs improvement, then, you know, your return on investment's well paid for.
How long ago was that potential attack on Hood County, Judge? Was it in 2022? 2021?
What was it, Drew? I can't remember. Two years ago?
2022, he says.
The world has changed since 2022. That's my point.
That's what I'm saying, IT is, is constantly changing. And Judge, I'm just, what I'd like to propose is, is this is a collaboration effort to work with your department, right? To work with the IT and just come in and offer a service. That's all we're doing. You know, we're not trying to come in and take over anything, we're not trying to, you know, say they're doing anything wrong. Matter of fact, if you look at my proposal, when we do Matter of fact, if you look at my proposal, when we do the audit, at the end of it, I ask for a closed session to review it with the court, because I think if there is something found, that doesn't need to be published to the public. That needs to be behind closed doors and a discussion that says, hey, here you have a potential risk, this is how you need to address it.
What's your background?
My background, about 35 years in IT, I worked with AT&amp;T as an engineer for 12 years, I've worked with DPS all across the state, I've worked with, I built Jack Evans' Police Headquarters downtown Dallas, that was one of my jobs, City of Fort Worth, NCT Cog, Tarrant County 911, worked with all of them.
Okay. What kind of, yeah, let me just ask you this.
Yes, sir.
I was an attorney, when somebody asks you to review a document, my fee to just look at a document was really expensive.
Sure.
Because I leave my law license on the ladder of my malpractice insurance.
Right.
Because if I didn't catch everything, and the next day they come up, it may take me, I'd say, an hour to read a document, but I was putting my experience, my reputation on the line.
Yes, sir.
If I missed something, and that guy got sued because of something I overlooked on the thing, I got sued, what about with you? Do you have any malpractice insurance that if you did this assessment for our IT department?
We're required by the state of Texas to carry that insurance? Yes, sir.
And what is the coverage on?
It's a million dollars.
A million dollars?
Yes, sir.
What would it, how would it come into play?
I want to be clear, though, that I don't care which company that you pick, they're not going to guarantee that whatever they do, that something's not going to happen down the line, right? I mean, this is an assessment for improvement, to do the due diligence, to put in the processes and really it's the infrastructure, right, how the infrastructure's secured, and just how that is protected by the outside threats, as well as the inside threats, because, believe it or not, employees are probably your biggest threat to security, okay?
When we voted on this, I just, excuse me, Judge.
What about doing these things, is part of this assessment trying to how they can better use their time or anything else like that? Do you do that?
Yes, yes, we basically review the entire department and just make recommendations on any kind of improvements, whether it be the ticket system, or just how they handle their day-to-day operations.
Have you done, have you done an assessment for the county?
Somerville and Ehrath, yes.
Somerville and Ehrath?
Yes, sir. I work closely with them, yes.
The fact that you showed up with today and the fact that you did analysis stuff, that strikes tremendously.
Yes, sir.
The other thing is, is CGI is certified already, and that's a plus.
Good, that's all I have.
Yeah, I would just like to ease attention, because it's, like I said, it's not an attack, this is just an assessment, a collaboration effort, and then we can come back and kind of review it as a team, make recommendations, that's all we're doing.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Hold it, you don't have, sir, you don't have to leave, some other people may ask you certain questions, and we do have a speaker here, too.
Are you through, Judge?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. I was going to actually point out that, because one of the issues that we had when we, the court voted to do this, to send out for bids on this, was that Commissioner Wilson was, it was very important to him that you be CEGIS-approved, and you are.
Yes, sir.
There's five outfits on here, and two of them are CEGIS-approved, and you're one of those. So, and the other thing that's important that I just want to point out, for me, is you can help us understand, see, my problem, my problem, this is me, with IT stuff, is I really don't know. You know, I'm not, I don't know what the lingo is, I don't know what the procedure should be, those types of instances, so it's important to me to have another, an outside party come in to explain to us what's going on, so that's part of this deal as well, that you can furnish to us, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And I do follow up and agree, any discussions between you and your personnel and the five of us is in high closed doors.
Yes, sir.
Because of the vulnerability.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely. And just, we helped Ehrath, going back to your question earlier, we helped Ehrath pass their CEGIS audit by DPS. We went into there, helped them basically get their security built up, so that they could pass their CEGIS audit just three years ago.
I think that, don't you do a CEGIS audit, Drew?
Yeah, DPS requires it, yes.
Yeah, so you, what is it, are they annually?
It's bi-annually, I think, they come out every two years, two to three years.
Every year? Every two years, Judge. Yes, every two years.
Every two years?
Yes, yes, sir.
You pass?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, that's good. Do you have sheriff?
Yeah, in my time as sheriff, we've been audited many times, and we pass, so thanks to IT, taking care of their business, too. Everybody working together, so.
I would like to echo that this is not adversarial toward the IT department. I'm not in this for a headhunter or a witch hunter or anything else. This is to sit back, analyze what we're doing, and to make sure that we're, a lot of times, and I've talked about this, we promote from within, and we can develop some systemic things in that, that an outside pair of eyes came in and say, hey, you ought to be doing this a little bit, too. I know, I hear phrases around this county about, you know, the work that you do with the individual departments, get things back up and running, you know. I know other counties can reach out to our county to ask questions on some of this IT stuff, because they're not getting the support from the operating system or whatever it is, if you can call that, they're not getting the support, and they can get a court answer by calling a JP office over here, going, hey, how do you do this? And so I think that there's a good rapport with, you know, with what is going on in a lot of these places, and some people wanted to make sure that I knew that. They reached out to me and said, hey, these guys are invaluable to us when we have these kind of issues. This is more a question of what does the infrastructure look like? What's going on behind the scenes and underneath, and is there something that can be learned? Again, this is not adversarial, this is not, you know, him against you. This is, is there a way to improve, to make sure that the next attack is stopped like last?
Absolutely, and so, I know we talked, Commissioner Andrews, about, that is really my concern as well, is if we go through this, I don't, again, I don't mind going through it, it would be nice to see if we have any holes or vulnerabilities. My only question to the court would be, what are we going to do with the results? Are we, if there is a deficiency, are we actually going to sink money into that and actually fix it? Or are we just going to say, okay, we'll look at it some other time? So that's really my concerns, but I have no problem doing an audit, we get audited all the time.
Well, my answer to that question would be, we don't know. We can't answer that, that's, we don't know, we'll have to see what happens first. If it's something we can take action on immediately, yes. If it's something that's going to require a lot of money, then we'll have to talk about it, but that's an unanswerable question at this stage, in my opinion, but it will be addressed, so, you know, we'll do, obviously, if we're going to pay a firm to come in here and do this, and there's discrepancies or deficiencies or whatever found that will help you, but it's going to cost some money, we'll have to address that.
Perfect. I would hope that Mr. Gossett, excuse me, Judge, I think I was speaking.
You just have to wait and see what the result's going to be, depending on what it is.
Absolutely.
After we all get together and they close session and find out what you have, the fact that you worked with Somerville and Ehrath and you came down here and your CEGIS-approved speaks volumes, and the fact that I know everything that you've done and passed up career with, when you said what you did with Jacks.
Jack Evans.
Jack Evans.
A personal friend of mine, but anyway, that's good.
Yes, sir.
What kind of timeframe, what kind of timeframe are we looking at as far as, you know, to perform this? I mean, you can't have a start-finish data, and I understand that.
So.
Roughly.
So if we were chosen, it'd probably be about three weeks before we would start, and in the proposal, we put 30 to 60 days to complete, but that's not a hard time, right? Because it's a collaboration effort.
I understand it's variable.
It could go longer than that, but yes.
But, you know, just getting some kind of timeframe in our mind that, you know, this is what we're looking at.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, excuse me, this will be my third time to try to speak over you guys, okay? I'm going to have to talk louder into the mic. Okay, so generally, when something like this is done, the consultant will provide a risk matrix that says, these are your highest risks.
Right.
And then there'll be a cost associated with correcting that risk. So to answer Drew's question, and similar to what Commissioner Eagle said, we would have to take a look at what you provide, go through the risk matrix, and prioritize, based on the risk and the cost, how to implement any or all of those recommendations. So I would assume that you would provide a risk matrix? Okay.
Correct, and I would also offer that there's not always a cost involved. A lot of times, there are savings that we find. You know, we come in and assess something, and we say, hey, you can change this and save this much money per year. We've done that both in Somerville and Ehrath. We've probably saved Somerville $200,000 a year by changing things in their network and making improvements.
Wow.
So it's not always a cost.
Right.
There's, sometimes there's savings. A lot of times, there's savings.
That'd be excellent.
So, okay.
Thank you. One last thing, on the start date, I know that we're changing phone systems over, we've got a new website coming on board, I know IT is kind of.
They're strapped.
They've got their hands full.
Yep, absolutely.
Is this, could we work out?
Well, the websites, the website's pretty much done, isn't it?
I was going to say, I can work with whatever company, of course, that gets chosen, so we can try to, I guess, smoothly do this, so to say.
Okay, well, how much, how labor-intensive for the IT department is your analysis? Let me ask you.
It's not, really. We sit down, we have a couple of discovery meetings, and then it's about getting access and just kind of reviewing everything. We'll interview each person and just kind of discuss different topics, but labor-intensive is not for their department.
Okay. Good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Now, the, I mean, from the website perspective, that's, that's, all those issues have been worked out. I'm not sure about the phone cut over, are we still having issues with the phone cut over?
We are working through some problems with the phone cut over, yes, ma'am. I know the website's done, domain change is done, we're almost done with the switches. We have, working with the sheriff to get the switches at the LEC swapped over. Of course, we just did the phones, so we are working through that, and then we have the RSA tokens.
Okay, thank you, just to talk about the topic.
We've got David Ferris. Yeah, yeah, I just kind of wanted to address, it must be a collaborative effort, okay? And as you know, as I've said, my last 14 years were in cybersecurity at a huge company, and our annual budget on cybersecurity was close to a quarter of a billion dollars. Okay, you had an attempted hacker, you stopped him, great. We had hackers every day from every place in the world. To get in, he tried one entry point. You had somebody looking, they caught it. There are thousands of entry points. He didn't come back. There are thousands, there are millions of hackers out there. The thing you've got going for you at Hood County is you're not a juicy target. The company I was at was a juicy target. But you also have to worry about, there are other types of hackers that just aren't interested in juicy. Oh, we're impenetrable. If I were a hacker, it's like, oh, this should be fun. There are going to be more entry points. So that's why you need to have reviews like this. Now, I was only in cybersecurity the last 14 years, other times I was doing other software developments for that company and others, but I've been through many audits, and it's more about the processes, procedures, vulnerabilities, errors and omissions, things of that nature. And I would be willing to bet that a large portion of his report is going to find things like, oh, this port's open to the world and shouldn't be, so somebody can use that as a vulnerability and a door to get in. Takes 10 seconds to correct. You just didn't notice it. Many things are going to be so simple to fix that they don't cost any money. Now, he may come back and say, you know, a different software for monitoring intrusions, things of that nature, because we spent, the last one was probably about a $20 million set of intrusion detection software. Now, you don't need that much, but there are also smaller versions of things like that. So there are things that may cost, but most in IT, I would think, are going to cost almost And again, it's got to be a collaborative effort. If there were any employees where I worked that were very resistant to collaborative analysis through the outside firms, they wouldn't have been there for very long. That is the way business works, especially IT in these days. You got to have review, you got to have collaboration. And I'll tell you, from what I heard, I didn't hear anything I would dislike about this gentleman here. I liked everything you said, I agree with everything you said. I don't know about the others, I don't know if they're better, I haven't looked at their resumes, I haven't seen detailed, we're going to check, you know, this on routers, we're going to check this, et cetera, we're going to check this, et cetera, okay? So I can't compare that, but I like everything he said. So, yeah, you need to do this analysis, because the risk is too big. And trust me, the thing is, you may have stopped one hack, but there will be another. Somebody else will get an idea of, well, let me try here, and they'll be looking at a place you're not looking, because, yes, we would be scrambling, trying to track down some rogue entry that we hadn't expected. And that's because we had millions of dollars pointing things out in software, and thousands of people in cybersecurity looking. There are too many entry points. You can't just assume we're bulletproof.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ferris, thank you.
Ms. Matlock, what fund would we get 38.5 out of for this? The magic one?
Probably.
Okay. All right, I'm going to make a motion, that we accept the proposal from SLG Technologies LLC, including signature if required, once we get an agreement done, to conduct, and I'm going to take the word "audit" out, to conduct an assessment of Hood County's IT Department at the number, or at the cost of $38,500 out of Fund 55.
Second. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Eagle to accept a proposal, including signature if required from the IT consulting firm, SLG Technology, to conduct an assessment of Hood County's IT Department, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. You are unanimously hired, sir. Give us a contract if we had one off-site. Okay, good deal. Item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action to allow Stark Council on Such An Abuse to Bring Awareness to Suicide Prevention by. abuse to bring awareness to suicide prevention by displaying two six-by-two, six-foot-by-two-foot wooden ribbons, four yard signs, two mesh ribbons at the historical courthouse, and purple and teal lighting, beginning September 2nd through September 30th. Also allow the use of the gazebo for a vigil on September the 24th, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., to recognize and honor loved ones lost to suicide. Okay, thank you. Yes, come to the speaker, and you've already introduced yourself, but speak on the record and tell us who you are and who you represent.
Hello, my name is Shannon Taylor. I'm a prevention specialist at Star Council. I'm new here, and today we are here to, I guess, talk about what you just repeated, which is the Suicide Awareness Month, and the decorations we wanna put around the square, and just bring awareness and some support to the community.
Okay, and you were here earlier.
Yes.
In proclamation, weren't you?
And thank you again for, I graciously appreciate that. Any type of support is so needed in this topic. Basically, what we plan to do is just have a couple, as stated on the screen, is to have a couple wooded ribbons, teal-purple, which is the ribbon for suicide awareness. We'd have a couple ribbons tied around certain lamp posts. We just wanna spread awareness for our cause, and just to show the community that this is an important topic, and to just understand that there is a stigma to mental health, and that there doesn't need to be. There needs to be awareness on what is happening in our communities.
Good deal. Well, thank you both. Thank you both for coming down here.
Did we?
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, and Sarah, were you aware that there's a facility use agreement that needs to be completed for use of the gazebo?
I believe we have.
I do believe we've talked to somebody about use of the gazebo.
Okay, just as, we'll just make the motion contingent on you completing that and returning it to Ms. Welborn. Okay.
Okay, dear.
I'll make the motion to allow Star Council on substance abuse to bring awareness to suicide prevention to display two six-by-two wooden ribbons, four yard signs, mesh ribbons at the historical courthouse, and purple and teal lighting, beginning September 2nd through September 30th. Also allow the use of the gazebo for a vigil on September 24th, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., contingent on the facility use agreement being completed, to recognize and honor loved ones' loss to suicide.
Second.
Okay.
Christie, you do have it, so I don't have to repeat that whole thing again. So any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It passes unanimously. Be sure to fill out that facilities agreement.
It's already filled out.
It's already filled out?
Okay.
Sorry, invite, yep.
Okay, good deal. Thank y'all both for coming down.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you both. Bye. All right, item number nine, discuss and take appropriate action to adopt the resolution urging TCEQ to deny air quality permit for Wolf Hollow Number Two Power LLC. Let me sit here. Okay, I guess it's yours.
Okay, did, so there was one speaker, she had...
You missed...
Highsmith.
Cardiologist.
Yeah, she...
Said she got a heart, she had to go.
Yeah, she left me her notes to read, but this is concerning the air quality permit requested by Wolf Hollow. There will be a public hearing on September the 9th at the Granberry Conference Center. I wanna thank the Hood County Coalition, Clean Air Coalition, that both, the mayor's not still here, but Mayor Jarrett and Judge Massengale are both on that and both signed that letter. The letter is attached in the agenda if anyone wants to read it, but this is expressing the same concern as, as outlined in this resolution. Does anybody wanna speak, or I'll just read through the resolution? If you can pull it up there, thank you. Well, first of all, I'll, Ms. Highsmith asked me to read her statement, so I'll read that. My name is Cindy Highsmith. I thank you, Judge Massengale and commissioners, for allowing me to speak today. Today, I'm asking that the court support the proposed resolution, asking TCEQ to not grant the requested air permit by Constellation Energy. I commend Judge Massengale and Mayor Jarrett for signing a letter to TCEQ, along with the Hood County Clean Air Coalition, asking the same. It is important that the Hood, that Hood County remain in attainment area. This status assures clean air for all residents and promotes responsible industry growth. The addition of eight gas turbines at Wood Hollow Two initially sounds advantageous. Dependable energy in Texas is a need, needed goal. However, this energy growth needs to be spread among many Texas counties. Before-told addition by Constellation Energy to Wolf Hollow Two, Wolf Hollow Two will add air toxins above EPA state limits. I am reading now from the letter sent by the Director of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. The proposed facility will emit the following contaminants in significant amount: carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, particulate matter, including particulate matter with diameters of ten microns or less, and 2.5 microns or less. In addition, the facility will emit the following contaminants: hazardous air pollutants, organic compounds, sulfuric, sulfur oxide, sulfur hexafluoride, and sulfuric acid mist. The proposed facility will also emit greenhouse gases. This alarm, this is alarming. Another alarming, another alarming containment that is not, or contaminant that is not discussed in TCEQ is mercury. Gas streams coming into, into an electric plant are not clean. They do contain contaminants. Mercury is natural gas. Mercury is in natural gas. It is such a serious contain, contaminant that the EPA leads the Global Mercury Partnership. Mercury is a heavy metal that does not degrade. It is not destroyed by heat. The last thing Hood County wants to do is have mercury emissions close to water. The Brazos River, Squaw Creek, and Lake Granberry are very close. There are three non-attainment areas in Texas. They are Houston, Dallas, Dallas-Fort Worth, and San Antonio. Do we want to become a non-attainment area? I think the answer is no. I support the supposed, the proposed resolution. My hope is our judge and all commissioners will sign the resolution. And that's from Cindy Highsmith, resident of Hood County. So, we are, we have a long court today, so unless someone is, wants to speak about it, I think I'll just go to the therefores, and let it be resolved. The top part of it is talking, it's very similar to the letter that was sent to, from the Hood County Clean Air Coalition, talking about what TCEQ has mentioned about this expansion plan. So, anyone have comments? Wanna speak? Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution to, what the last part says is the Hood County Commissioners Court urges TCEQ to deny issuance of proposed state air quality permit 175173, issuance of prevent, prevention of significant deterioration, air quality permit PSDTX 1636, and issuance of greenhouse gas GHG PSD, air quality permit GHG PSDTX 238, for emissions of GHG, and that this resolution be mailed to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, Office of Chief Clerk, PO Box 13087, Austin, Texas, the offices of Senator Birdwell and Representative Slosson, and the Hood County News. So I'll make the motion to adopt this resolution.
I have your second.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to adopt the resolution urging TCEQ to deny the air quality permit for Wolf Hollow Number Two Power LLC, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next, item number ten, discuss and take appropriate action to offer AirMed Care to Employees Through Payroll Deduction effective October the 1st, 2024. Yes, sir. We've got two speakers here, finally, right?
We are happy to be here.
Okay. What's the cost to an employee?
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. Let me just...
Well, state, yeah, state your name, and we know you represent AirMed Care, but...
And if it's not working, I could just walk you through it. There you go. Yeah, it works? Okay, good. All right. Thank you very much. Well, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, members of the court. My name is Mario Seines. I represent Air Care, AirMed Care Network. I'm the local membership sales manager, and with us today, we have Andrew. I'll let him introduce himself.
I'm Andrew Rains. I'm a flight nurse and paramedic with Air Evac here in town, also the base clinical lead.
And our purpose of being here with you today is actually present you, or propose, making our memberships available to Hood County employees. And instead of just jumping into, you know, the, the pricing structure, we would really like to give you an idea of what this all entails. This is not a proposal for the current standing access or site plan that's already in place through the water bill. That is a limited and restricted offering. What we're bringing to the table is a nationwide network, and that's basically what it is. AirMed Care Network is composed of four major national providers. It's Air Evac Life Team, which is a local operator here. We've been here since 2010. We not only serve the community, we are the community. I live here in Granberry, and most of our staff does too, so we have a vetted interest in, in providing this service and having it stay here for as long as it's needed. Nationally, we also have Guardian Flight, MedTrans, and Reach. Those four organizations compose the largest membership network in the country. We have over three hundred and twenty locations across thirty-eight states, including Alaska and Hawaii, and we are well over three million members strong across the nation. This just gives you a little bit of an overview of what we're actually bringing to the table. As I said, we're not a seven helicopter provider in north-central Texas. This is national coverage, and that's what we want to make available to your employees. This just gives you a little bit of an overview, as far as our local operation. Those times that you see there are estimated times, and maybe, could you elaborate a little bit on, on the times?
So on here, we have our, our flight times based on, on Granberry...
Please come over to the...
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. These are our flight times based on, on launching from Granberry, the, the times once we're in the air to, to getting on scene. We do have a seventy-mile assigned radius. That said, there's a lot of other aircraft around, so we'll, we'll go to some other areas and, and be a second in, or, or things like that.
Yeah.
Good. This is the crew that, if, if unfortunately, anybody here needs us while we're on duty, it'll be one of these people here that come over to, to take care of you or, or your family. One of the other things that we do in the community, besides the medical care, we give LZ classes, we give continuing education classes to fire departments, EMS providers, hospitals, things like that, just to make sure everybody is up on everything medically and, and operationally as well. With LZ classes, we try to come out to each department. We try to come out once a year. Sometimes scheduling doesn't work with, with everybody's departments, but that's our goal. And basically, just teach everybody, and their, their new, new members, how to safely set up an LZ point, so that we can do our job safely and get in and out as quickly as possible. Locally, at the very north end of the Granberry Airport, we have a ten thousand square foot facility, where we have, on average, twenty-five, twenty-six aircraft that are assigned for heavy maintenance. Most of the Air Evac bases that you'll see, like if you drive on I-20 towards Abilene, you'll see the, the Eastland Base right off the, the highway there. You can do regular maintenance there. If it's anything heavy, where we're pulling on engines, transmissions, things like that, we bring those all over here to this facility. We have seventeen people that are assigned to that facility for, for maintenance, so we're also bringing jobs in, into the county.
So, when we were saying that we're not just here as a service provider, but we also bring revenue back, that's something we are very, very proud of. We're not just here to collect a check based on a membership offering and, you know, run away. We're actually here, so our presence has a particular interest to bring back to the community. And I think some of the points that Andrew just mentioned right now elaborate to that particular point. We want to support the community. As a matter of fact, we do the same with the volunteer fire department, not only here in Granberry, but in other surrounding areas. That's something that's a primary objective of ours, so I just wanna elaborate on that. So what is really a membership? Well, for one, it's the standard protocol, right? This is, this membership does not really make you any more likely to get flown to where you need to go or not. It's really determined by 911 operators. They determine whether or not a helicopter or an airplane is needed, and then after that, patients are transported to the closest, most appropriate medical facility for whatever need they have. And that's one of the differences that separates us from many other organizations out there. You know, it could be, you know, in a ranch, someone needs to be flown for a medical emergency. It could be the scene of an accident on the side of the road, or anything that you're doing that puts your life at risk. That is a biggest differentiator from other providers. We don't care, basically, what you are doing, whether you're climbing Mount Everest, well, we have one here locally, or whatever it is that you're doing, there isn't, there isn't something where we will say, okay, we're declining your claim. We are not insurance. We don't care what insurance actually say, whether they decide to find it medically necessary for you to be flown or not. It's transparent to us. If we put you in our aircraft, then, and you remember, there's absolutely no cost associated to it. And again, that's a big difference from other providers, including here locally. So I just wanted to give you a rundown or an idea of what that actually entails. Another thing that makes us very, very unique is our early activation protocol, and I'll let Andrew talk a little bit about that.
So, there's, there's times associated with anything either traumatic, or, you know, a stroke, or heart attack, anything like that. Time, time is tissue, is one of the sayings that we have, so the quicker that we can get you to the surgeon or the medical facility that, you know, that's gonna take care of you, the better your outcome is going to be. That said, we do have a lift time. It takes seven to ten minutes from the time that the call comes in for us to be airborne, depending on the situation and time of year as well. If we can put that ten minutes and stack that on the same, same ten minutes that it's taking EMS to get to you, and we can already be in the air, then ultimately, we can get to you quicker, and you can get to where you need to go quicker. That, that can be with a traumatic, anything traumatic, a car wreck, you know, major car wreck that's dispatched out into county. Lipan is a really good example of that, because there's, you know, it's a huge difference, or, I'm sorry, distance for EMS to, to get out that way. I mean, I'm not gonna read all the, all the words on the screen for you, but, you know, those are the, the different things that we would potentially early activate for. The other, other thing that, that I do wanna clarify, we're not just picking you up and running. We're, like, we have a, a huge complement of medications, equipment. We carry blood products, so we bring the ER and ICU to you on the side of the road, and I'm doing the same thing to take care of your airway and breathing and things like that, that they would be doing in a level-one trauma hospital, so.
Do you have, quick question. Do you have a Lucas machine on the aircraft?
No, sir, but we, we partner with Tech EMS, so if we do need a Lucas, then we'll, we'll pair up with them. Doing CPR in a helicopter is something that we, we try not to do. There's a...
I mean, I just wondered, you know...
Yeah.
And that's a key point, you know, we, we are not just a logistics air provider. We actually do treatment, and that is a big peace of mind, you know? It's just not the transportation. There's a whole lot more involved in it. So what does a membership really provide? Well, again, as I mentioned earlier, membership does not really determine whether you're gonna be flown or not. That's really up to the 911 dispatcher and the first responders. They will make that determination as to what needs to happen to treat you in a way that you can survive. What the membership does do, it does guarantee that you will have no out-of-pocket expense when transported by us. And again, I like to emphasize, even if your insurance provider declines a claim, again, we're not dependent on what insurance say. If you're a member, you're automatically covered. Especially, this is more so important in the day and age that we live in. A decade ago, fifty-five percent of benefit plans had a deductible. Nowadays, it's well over 81% that have a deductible. And usually, 25% of those have what is considered a high deductible plan. And most of us do that because we pay a lower premium upfront. But at the end, when the emergency occurs, you have a huge bill. So a recent study that was done by Kaiser Foundation was able to identify an average of what that number is actually, that actually is. And it's around $4,500 nowadays. So it's a significant amount of money compared to what you're going to see the membership cost. It makes perfect sense. Now, most people think that, you know what, I have Medicare, I'm covered, I'm good. Well, the reality is, is that Medicare Part A only, flat out, does not cover air transportation. If you have Medicare Part B, it covers only 20%, which could be up in, you know, the $2,000 range. So that's something that we always talk to people about. And although your employees have a commercial insurance, there's still that possibility of having that 20% left over brought back to them. So some of the things that are frequently asked, for example, one of the things that is common nowadays, most employees may be insured themselves, but their household members may not be. What happens if one of my household members is not insured and they need to be flown? Well, the beautiful thing about our membership is that it covers everyone under their roof. Anyone who lives under their roof is covered. Even if they're not insured, they will still be covered through the membership plan, regardless if they're insured or not. So that's a very important thing to know because, as we mentioned earlier, there are families that don't have all members being covered under the same insurance policy. The very, very, very good thing that we have here in Hood County, the standard membership on what we are proposing here today usually ranges, depending on how many employees there are, anything 149 employees or less is about $75. But because we have an existing site plan here already in place through Texas AMS, we have what you see on the lower portion, instead of just staying with the standard offering through the water bill. If you decide to upgrade, which is what we're offering here today, then that could be anywhere from $55 if the employee is 59 or younger or $45 if the employee is 60 or over. That is what we're offering. And that upgrade in membership will bring all benefits that have been discussed here today. Again, the nationwide coverage and the not having the need to fill out an application or submit a claim. As long as you're a member, again, you are covered. That is the emergent piece. That is what we consider an emergent membership. Again, the scene of the accident or the medical emergency at home. We also have something that we extend to our members, which is called a flying home membership. And what that is, is designed for people that travel outside frequently, whether it be here domestically or internationally. And it's basically a repatriation service. So let's say that you fall ill, you know, while you're visiting family in Florida, and you're out there and you have to be taken to an emergency room. Well, if you want to be flown back as soon as you're deemed stable enough for flight, this particular membership will bring you back in a private jet and take care of all the logistical requirements, whether it be from the hospital to the airport, from the airport in Florida to the airport here in Texas, and then from the airport here in Texas to the hospital. It's a bedside-to-bedside service. As long as you're 150 nautical miles away from home, this actually kicks in. There's no expense to you, and you're flown in a private jet, which you'll see a little bit or learn a little bit more about. This is actually something that, again, is designed for people that travel out into the country or if they choose to go for the international, they can actually get an international repatriation. And I was going to play a video here for you today, but I understand that there's some audio complications. Therefore, we cannot play it, so I'll just talk through what you're going to see here. This is basically our international repatriation service. The aircraft that you see are owned by us, the equipment inside is owned by us, and they're operated by us. All the medical staff that you see there, they're employees of Air Med Care Network. So what this does is that it provides anyone who travels abroad be able to be flown back to their country or to their home area by basically not paying anything other than, of course, the membership fee. This is something that is designed, again, to bring you back home, whether here in the U.S. or internationally. We have been given many awards because of our international support. And as you'll see here, there's basically a lot of recognition from camps in Ironami, which are, Department of Defense, which are entities that regulate or oversee some of these procedures. But this particular offering, it would also be accessible to your employees to what we're offering through a payroll deduction. So whether it be the emergent piece, the helicopter ride, I guess if you could say, on the scene of an accident or at home in a ranch, or whether it be you coming back home to recuperate, that's all part of what we're offering here today. So what did the flying home membership look like? Well, if you decide to go with the domestic membership, obviously, the longer the term, the lower the rate. In this case, you could, the employees could opt for anyone from a one-year to a 10-year. Same thing with the international. They could also opt in for whatever they choose or whatever they feel their family is best serviced with. So this is a breakdown of what it would look like in your employees' deduction. Now, please pay attention to the highlighted area because, again, we are talking about an upgrade. Not very many places in the country have what we have here in Hood County. So this is a huge opportunity. So if you look at the highlighted area, if you were to do 24 deductions, basically, the emergent piece, you'd be looking at about $2.30 per deduction. If you were to add the flying home, then it would be about, when it says combo, $8.14. That would be for the both. That's what the employee would see. If you were to do 26 deductions, again, right below that, $2.12 per deduction, or if they take the combo, it would be $7.51. So it's a very, very excellent opportunity. Again, we're not talking just a local provider here in north central Texas. We're talking, you know, our entire network. In Texas alone, we have 40 bases. And the nearest ones around us are mineral wells. We have up north...
We've got Decatur, Hillsboro, there's...
Eastland?
Yeah, Eastland, Colleen, Wichita Falls...
Roundwood?
Sherman, there's multiple...
There's multiple. So we're bringing, you know, a very comprehensive package, make them accessible to them. And I think this has a lot to say from, you know, you folks bringing this to your employees. You know, it's a way of saying thank you and appreciation for all the hard work that they do. So with that, we close our presentation, and we'd like to hear any questions that you may have, which we may be able to answer for you here today. Yes, sir?
What happens if you're a member and you're out of state? And when you had that, you know, map up earlier where it showed all the locations, what happens if you're in a state that doesn't have one of your membership, you know, aircraft? You know, and you have to be airlifted?
Yeah. So the membership covers basically the financial safety and if it's provided when you're flown by us. If you're flown by another provider, you know, that's not, we're not insurance, so it would be between the patient and that other service provider. However, I must say that just based on our network, the size of our network, there's a significant high likelihood that you'd probably be picked up by one of our providers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You may have said this at the very beginning, but is Air Med Care a nonprofit, a publicly traded, or a private organization?
I believe we're a for-profit organization. But there's been some discussion just recently, but I could confirm and get back to you with a definite answer.
So is it, so if you're private, are you publicly traded or privately held?
Again, I'm not too sure, but if you could...
My understanding, I'm going to say I'm clinical. I'm about as far away from the business side as you can. I have been here in Hood County for 12 years and have been exposed to all of that. So my understanding is, yeah, it's all part of GMR, which is Global Medical Response, which is a privately-held, non-traded company.
You familiar with them?
I am pretty familiar with Air Med Care.
Yeah, and the part of the confusion...
As a matter of fact, when I was in Fairbanks, I drove by the Guardian Air Headquarters or whatever that was in Fairbanks last time. Covered in that same thing, which, again, is not covered under the site plan that we have with Texas AMS. That extends, what, 30 miles from the city?
It's the requirements for that. You have to be a Hood County resident flown from within Hood County borders by Texas EMS, Pecan Plantation EMS, or LGMC.
I mean, I think this is a great opportunity. I'm just wondering if we're, by making this decision today and with just this company, are we cutting out some other entity that might have a similar solution?
Let me touch on that a little bit.
Okay. I figured you would know, so.
Yeah, yeah. We actually do have insurance with CareFlight, who is the local, much smaller, that's only in this area, that the county provides that insurance to their employees at, it's $10 or $12. It's very inexpensive. What they're talking about is a significantly larger network. I'll say this, Lipan Fire Department, we pay for memberships through this same program, basically, the upgraded memberships for everybody in that department. Because we're kind of on the edge out there. So if we're over in Palopinto operating and have to get flown, something happens on scene, then the last thing I want to do is go to one of my members and say, hey, you got a helicopter, go on top of it. So we do provide that through the fire department. I think it's a good deal. And what we're talking about here is not, we're just saying that an employee...
Right. It's strictly voluntary.
Payroll deduction to pay for this service if they so choose.
Yeah. It's strictly voluntary, but we are offering one particular solution and not any others. So if there was any...
Well, we do have the other one already in place. And frankly, I've flown, I don't know.
Yeah.
Andrew Rains is precinct one resident, and I have met him on the scene of an ambulance landing multiple times. And I think all the flights I've ever flown, I've flown two that weren't either CareFlight or Air Evac. And that's, PCH is...
PHI.
PHI, okay.
And if I may, Ms. Samuelson, we're not saying, you know, be exclusive with us. As a matter of fact, I think it's wise to have multiple coverage. You know, I, for example, have multiple memberships with multiple providers because I want to protect my family. So we're not saying be exclusive. What we're saying here is that what we are bringing to the table, as I said earlier, we're not a seven helicopter operator, which is what CareFlight, you know, is basically, seven helicopters in north central Texas only. We're bringing a national coverage, not only on the emergent side, but also on the non-emergency side, which is the flying home. What we're saying here is this could be a tool that your employees could choose to protect their families financially, right? It's a financial protection to what we're offering through our memberships. But I think if you were able to compare, you know, the operations, you'll see that, you know, we're a much more comprehensive coverage and service that we're able to bring. But we're not by any means saying, you know, commit just to us. Like I said personally, I have two memberships because, again, I want to protect my family.
Okay. So you said you're privately held. Do you know who the chairman of the board is?
I don't have that information with me, and I'm sort of new in the position. I'm still learning, most of the people, but I would be more than happy to provide that information.
We don't have very, very good internet service in this room for reasons.
Yeah, I noticed. I was trying to do some searching.
Is it U.S.-based?
Yes, they are.
St. Louis?
So we have, we have some, so Air Evac was basically out of Missouri, O'Fallon. They moved to St. Louis. When we merged with GMR, our corporate headquarters is in Louisville now. We have a few offices in Colorado as well, but most everything's run out of the Louisville location.
Yeah, and Air Med Care Network is out of West Plains, Missouri. That's our home office.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? And I will provide you with those answers when we're done with our meeting here today. I'll send that over to you. But are there any more questions? No? And then the only question that I would have is, based on what you determined, you know, feel free to let me know what I may be able to do to provide you additional information. Christine has a copy of a sample agreement, but I will be more than happy to provide one specifically to this opportunity in case you decide to move forward. Okay?
Well, with that, I'll make a motion to offer Air Med Care to employees through payroll deduction effective October 1st, 2020.
Okay.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to offer Air Med Care to employees through payroll deduction effective October 1st, 2024, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed? It carries unanimously, so.
Can I assume it'll be just 24 payroll deductions?
Oh, yeah, because I think it'd be part of the motion. Claire thought that, so let me amend that motion to say the payroll deduction would be taken out 24 annual checks.
Twenty, all right. Just amended to that.
Right. Got it. I'm good.
Good catch. Still carrying.
You may want to get with her and, you know...
Just work out the details. Yes, ma'am.
We want to maybe bring you in and present it to the employee.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. And would that be okay after the meeting for you and I to talk or schedule an appointment? Oh, I heard.
So maybe Friday we can talk?
Friday? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Thank you once again.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Discuss and take appropriate action to stop future payroll deductions for Hood County YMCA membership. This will not affect current employees with a YMCA payroll deduction.
Yes. I've been, I visited with the treasurer about this probably six or seven months ago. This is not going to affect anybody who wants a membership with the YMCA. They still get the same discount as what they've always been offered. We just want to take it, the burden, and put it on the YMCA and the employee to where it's not deducted through payroll. Because when an employee signs up for YMCA membership, they cannot cancel it until open enrollment. That puts a burden on the employee sometimes. And so what we would like to do is just give it back to the employee. They can go out to the YMCA. They still get the same discount. They would just have it deducted either probably from a credit card or their checking account or something like that. But the people, the employees who are already having payroll deduction will continue to do that for them.
Do you know how many employees have a current payroll deduction?
For the YMCA?
Yeah.
About six?
Six?
Probably so.
Yes. How many are there?
Fifteen? Okay.
Fifteen, okay.
What is the discount?
I believe it's about 10%.
You'll keep the deduction for those 15, yeah, probably?
Oh, sure. Anyone who's already having a deduction, yes. Correct. Moving forward. And then that way, they can cancel whenever they, I think it's, I think the Y requires a 30-day notice to cancel. And so it makes it easier on the employee.
Okay, do I hear a motion? A move that we authorize action to stop future payroll deduction for Hood County YMCA membership. This will not affect current employees with YMCA payroll deduction. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to stop future payroll deductions for Hood County YMCA membership, but will not affect current employees with a YMCA payroll deduction, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 12. Discuss and take appropriate action to sign the event application allowing the use of the south side of the historical Courthouse parking lot beginning Friday, August 30th, at 10:00 a.m. through Monday, September 2nd, at 4:00 p.m. for the Labor Day Weekend Festival. I think we have an event application for that, don't we? It's in... Let's see. Does anybody care to make a motion? It's filled out. I move that we allow the event application for the historic Courthouse parking lot beginning Friday, August 3rd, at 10:00 a.m. through Monday, September 2nd, at 4:00 p.m. for the... the Labor Day Weekend Festival.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Item number 13, take appropriate action to hold a public hearing for the proposed tax rate of .309524 for $100 evaluation. Is that for the future or for today?
Yeah, that's, no, that's for FY '25. That's for FY '25.
But this was the public hearing that we voted on last time, to have the public hearing today.
Yeah, it was for today.
So we need to adjourn?
At this time, at 20 till 1:00 p.m., we are now adjourned into a public hearing for the proposed tax rate hearing, and, Ms. Auditor, do you wanna come down and say, well, this, actually, I guess, this is my, well, that was the tax rate that we took it the last time.
Oh, so...
The proposed tax rate, with the legal requirement of the...
Oh, man.
Does anybody in the public out here wish to, we kinda thin out the ranks here here.
Received a...
We're gonna have to get y'all some really metal stuff.
What'd you say?
Thick and thin.
Oh, someone signed up to speak?
He's young.
Okay. We have received, well, I don't know about the rest of you, but I have received quite a few comments.
Mr. Maris was here, but he left.
I've received some email comments regarding the tax rate, but they didn't come to speak, but I will read those. They've been coming in as we've been having court.
Well, if there's no one from the public to speak, I guess we'll close this public hearing, as required by law, so. And 23 minutes till 1:00 p.m., we're closing our public hearing and adjourning back into the commissioner's court. Item number 14, take appropriate action to hold a public hearing for the proposed budget. So at now 22 minutes till 1 o'clock, we're adjourning into a public hearing. Is there anybody here in the public wishes to discuss the proposed budget? I don't see anybody. Anybody else have anything to say? Not? At 22 minutes till 1, we are adjourning back into commissioner's court. For item number 15, discuss matters related to the YMCA building lease. May adjourn to executive session as authorized by Dean 551.072 deliberation regarding real property. So at this time, we're gonna turn into executive session. And then for you two stalwarts here, the only other agenda item today is, again, discuss matters related to the 2024-2025 budget, may adjourn into executive session as authorized by the government code, which we'll probably do, so.
Go ahead and...
If you guys need a cheeseburger, bring me one back, I would appreciate it.
How long do you anticipate these are going to be?
I have no earthly idea.
Do you wanna go ahead and do the consent agenda?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if we could...
Oh, okay. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna skip around, we'll skip to item 15 and go into the consent agenda. Is anybody wishing to pull anything or discuss anything on the consent agenda?
I just wanna make note of, on the treasurer's report, B4, this was to accept the check. This was on the sale of the medical building. We closed on that, I think it was August the 5th, and those funds went into that GL account that you see there, so just wanted to be sure that the court knew that that building had closed and those funds were received.
Well, we didn't overlook, I didn't overlook a million, overlooked a lot of things. Anybody else have anything? If not, do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
That we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Wilson, second by Eagle, approve the consent agenda. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next, Road Operations, Mr. Donald Lynn.
Judge, commissioners, the first agenda item, we have a public hearing to discuss and consider the approval of the following traffic regulation and take appropriate action. This is to establish a stop sign on Williams Drive at Montego Bay Boulevard. We did receive the request from the HOA of Montego. We went out and assessed this area, and right now, it does have a yield sign, but it would be better purposely fit if we did place a stop sign at this location. And Road Operation makes a recommendation to place a stop sign.
All right, at this time, I think we will adjourn into a public hearing at 19 minutes till 1 o'clock. So we are now in a public hearing to establish a stop sign on Williams Drive at Montego Boulevard. Would you start a report? Mr. Donald Lynn, have you agreed with that, and that Road Ops would construct a stop sign there, approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so at this time, we're gonna, at 19 minutes till 1, we're gonna turn back into commissioner's court. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we establish a stop sign on Williams Drive at Montego Bay, on Montego Boulevard.
Second. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Wilson to establish a stop sign on Williams Drive at Montego Boulevard, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next, Mr....
Judge, the next one is discuss and take appropriate action on accepting the following roadways in the Stewart Oaks development into the county road system in Precinct 3. All four of these roadways were actually built in July of 2015, and they have received their third and final seal coat, which closed out per our regulations, and that is Kaylee Court from Stewart Oaks Court to the cul-de-sac 240 feet, Courtney Court from Stewart Oaks Court to the cul-de-sac 240 feet, Brooke Court from Stewart's Oaks Court to the cul-de-sac 240 feet, and Mona Court from Stewart's Oak Court to the cul-de-sac at 240 feet. And it's not a typo, each one of these are 240 feet. They're exactly the same. Never had that. Road Operation does recommend accepting these four roadways into the county road system.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the following roadways in the Stewart Oaks development into the county road system. Kaylee Court from Stewart Oaks Court to cul-de-sac, Courtney Court from Stewart Oaks Court to cul-de-sac, Brooke Court from Stewart Oaks Court to cul-de-sac, and Mona Court from Stewart Oaks Court to cul-de-sac, each of those in 240-foot increments.
Okay, here a second.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Wilson to that those four items, this is a power that we treat as...
Yeah, you're there.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Is that it?
No, sir, I'm...
Development.
One more?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's to set a public hearing for the replat of the Royal Oaks additions, lots C-R1 and C-R2 in Precinct 3. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for the October 8th, commissioner's court meeting.
Okay, October the 8th of 2024. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we authorize a public hearing for the replat of Royal Oaks addition lots C-R1 and C-R2 for October...
October 8th.
8th, 2024.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to set a public hearing for the Royal Oaks addition lots for October the 8th, 2024, second by Commissioner Andrews. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Judge, last one we have is discuss and consider the final plat of the Heaven Hill addition, lots 1 and 2, block 1, and this is located in Precinct 4. The final plat is located in the Water Quality District and consists of subdividing of four and approximately three tenths of an acre into two lots. Lot 1 being two and three tenths of an acre, and Lot 2 being approximately two acres. The proposed lots will be served by a private well and onsite sewage facility. These two lots are accessed by the Alta Vista Court, so there's no infrastructure that's gonna be built for this. Staff has reviewed all the comments, and they have been addressed, and staff recommends approval of the Heaven Hill addition.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Yeah, make a motion to approve the final plat of Heaven Hill addition, lots 1 and 2, block 1, as stated.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to adopt the final plat of Heaven Hill addition, lots 1 and 2, block 1, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Financial, payment of invoices, Stephanie Matlock.
Hello. Hi. We have $964,563.62 of invoices for this court. My office has reviewed all of the invoices and recommends payment.
Do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills, the amount of $964,563.62.
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to pay the bills, the amount of $964,563.62. Second by Commissioner... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Any else?
Yes. Bank rec. We have financial reports at the end of the month, and we also have bank reconciliations. If it's okay with you, maybe we can loop those together. My office has reviewed all of the monthly reports and all the bank reconciliations here and asks that the court accepts them.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly reports and the bank reconciliations from August 1st through October 15th.
Second. Any motion to pay by Commissioner Samuelson to accept the monthly reports, second by Commissioner Andrews, Chief and Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, other than going into executive session, this meeting is adjourned at 12:01. Come into, adjourned back into commissioner's court, and no action was taken in executive session. So what do we have left?
Nothing.
You said adjourned. We still have...
Are you gonna talk about the letters?
Yes, that's...
I think we just wait till after Labor Day, we go through these things.
Okay, good. It's a good idea. We have until the end of September to get through. We can, when we all come back after Labor Day, we can have, discuss, let us tune this thing up a little bit better anyway. Okay? So with that, at nine minutes after 2, we will adjourn this commissioner's court meeting.